Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the order of the January 26, 2009 City Council Redevelopment Agency for the city of San Carlos. Please do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our law.
Okay, Chief.
Any changes to the order of agenda? There's one change I think I would propose, since we have all our volunteers from the police department here. If we could move item 7(c) to item 4(b), so we'll put it right after the presentations. Would that be all right?
Yes.
Okay. Item 3, Council Communications and Announcements. Mr. Grocott.
Excuse me, Adam. The other thing I had is, actually, just a question from staff if they could update us on the traffic light at San Carlos Avenue.
It's on.
It's on?
It's on and working, yeah.
Well, then, I guess we don't need an update. Last I saw, when I went to the standing, it was not on.
I didn't see my system today yet, so, very good.
Okay, there's your update.
Hopefully, Chief, we got no problems yet announced. Not so far. Twelve hours in, we're still good.
And it looks like it's timed rightly to make it up the street.
Not that it's at your department, that's Robert's department, probably. Anything else? Mr. Grocott?
Nope.
Okay. Mr. Lewis?
I just have an update from Week of the Family. We'll let Mayor Grisilli do the full update, but yesterday we had a screening at Britton Acres of Wally. A family screening yesterday afternoon at 3:15, and it was a lot of fun. Everybody comes with their, you know, Tessa Martino makes great popcorn, puts on a good show, the quality of the AV was great this year, and Tim King continues to do a great job coordinating everything, and we had a good time at Britton Acres yesterday.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? Vice Mayor Royce?
Yeah, I just have one item. Of course, we've had an exciting week with the government, and our new president, of course, gave a speech. I would like to actually quote one part that I thought's very appropriate because it talks about government, and, you know, "We appear, and you need to help us be responsible." But he talked about here, quote-unquote, "The question we will ask today is not whether government is too big or too small, but whether it works." And then he goes on and says a few more things, and says, "When the answer is yes, we intend to move forward. When the answer is no, programs will end. Those of us who manage the public dollars will be held to account to spend wisely, reform bad habits, do our business in the light of day, because only then can we restore the vital trust between people and their government." So, just want to start the meeting with that quote from our head CEO and leader of this country. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Royce. As Councilmember Lewis indicated, the Week of the Family is in full swing. We had Band-Arma, we had Cook's Night Out, we had the Family movie. Tonight is Family Activity Night. I'm sure everyone's sitting at home with Channel 27 watching us as part of their activities. We have a tomorrow night, a Wild Animal Show, Hill or Flight Night on Wednesday, sing-along, community sing-along on Wednesday, a jazz concert on Thursday at Tierra Linda Middle School, Game Night on Friday, a citywide Rochambeau Contest on Friday, and Family Theater Night on Saturday. All great things, all on the website to identify San Carlos Week of the Family, which is so unique to our city and, again, shows how we communicate in the full community. So, that's all I had. So, we'll move on to the agenda. Item 4, Presentations 4A, Presentation of Proclamations to Paul Emmert and Cody Elliott, Boy Scout Troop 301 upon receiving their Eagle Scout Awards. Are these gentlemen here? They're not. Is anyone here to receive them? Okay, well, let's do that. Unfortunately...
It should be on.
It's on? Good, okay. Unfortunately, we didn't get a chance to give them an inordinate amount of notice. Are they in school, or I assume? Could you identify yourself just so? Oh, fine, okay, Ms. Elliott, can you take both these four of these boys? Thank you. You know, both of these young men, to achieve Eagle Scout is quite amazing. I mean, it's not something that, I don't know what the percentage is, it's probably less than 1% of young men who earn Boy Scouts do this, and it's a terrific honor, and both these young men should be highly complimented for all the work that they've put in. Do you happen to, again, I apologize for putting you on the spot, do you know the actual things they did to, the last project that they did, or at least your sons?
My son built planted boxes at the Peninsula Jewish Community Center for the preschool.
Oh, that's great. Thank you very much, that's wonderful. Again, on behalf of the whole city, the City Council, and everybody in the community, congratulations, and please give them our best. Thank you very much.
And let's move on. As I mentioned, we're going to move 7(c) to this point. So, Chief, I guess introduction of police volunteer programs.
Good evening, Mayor Grisilli, members of the City Council. Recently, the police department made a big push to expand our volunteer program, and also, not only just in terms of numbers, but in terms of the role that they play in the organization. And I wanted to take a couple minutes to introduce you to our volunteers. Before I do that, I definitely want to thank and acknowledge the staff members who've been involved in the volunteer program and is certainly involved in leading this new initiative. It's Commander Cimpio, Jenna McAlpin has been involved with the volunteers, and then recently, Celine Valdez, who's really done a great job with recruiting new volunteers to the program and expanding their roles. So, first, I'd like to introduce David Gonzalez. And David is, he's lived in town on and off since 1981. He's served as a member of the Board of Directors for several nonprofits and for the San Carlos Art and Wine Festival. He currently works full-time as a Vice President for Affinity Bank, and he's working on several projects out of the chief's office. He's working for me with collating and gathering and presenting business information, looking at performance and efficiency standards and whatnot. And as a banker, David's just been great in terms of giving me advice on how to present that in a readable format. Next is Frank Harrington. I think Frank has the distinction of being, spending more time as a volunteer with the city than pretty much anybody, he's been here for almost 40 years, but most of that capacity was a reserve police officer. Frank worked the street on patrol and as a uniformed solo beat officer as a reserve on his free time, and at one point, he decided, well, I think I'm going to hang up the gun, but I still want to volunteer. So, Frank has been here for a long time, he's done a great job. Next is Lou Jaramillo, and Lou has been a volunteer for others, for the CHP and for Belmont, and he worked a lot on patrol, and he's worked a lot around the schools. You may have seen around Central School, making sure the kids cross safely. Recently, Lou's worked transferred up to Investigations Unit, and he's working on pawn slips, and he's working to make sure that people who purchase guns have the legal right to do so, and he's really taken a good role in investigations, and that's an example of where we expanded the program. Then there's Jim McClellan. He's lived in town for 55 years, he's assigned to the records unit, and he's in duty, his duties are processing reports for other agencies, filling, filing citations, and doing lots of clerical work. He also works as a volunteer for SFO as an international traveler's aide, and if you want to know anything about travel, Jim's your guy, that's for sure. Then there's John Walton. John's lived in town for 35 years, he's a retired Army veteran. He's assigned to patrol and handles a wide variety of calls in patrol, and you'll often see him around the schools and also downtown. A new volunteer is Alejandra Lopez, and she is assigned to the Patrol Division, and she will be assigned to do such things as abandoned vehicle abatement, subpoenas, moving the radar trailer, and generally assisting officers in the field, and she also has another great skill that she brings, is that she's bilingual, is to speak Spanish. Josh Wang, Josh also is one of the newer volunteers, and he will also work out in patrol, and Josh has also expressed a desire to become a police officer, so maybe someday you'll see Josh in another capacity. Then there's Joyce Schofield. She's lived in town for 35 years, she works in records, also entering citations, performing name checks, and working with the database. Then there's Joya Ferenza, and Joya has lived in town for 35 years, and she has a retired legal secretary. She does volunteer work with UCSF and with us, and she works in the records unit, and her duties are citations and clerical work. So, I just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce you to them, let you know that the fine work that they do, and really also how much we appreciate their service through the police department. Thank you.
Great. Let's give them all a hand.
I'm sure I speak for the entire council and the entire city. Thank you very much. Obviously, your work supplements the police department on the work that they do every day, and without you folks, I'm sure it wouldn't run as smoothly as it does. So, again, thank you very, very much for all the work that you do and all the volunteer time. Thank you, again.
Okay, moving on to item 5, Public Comment. Persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not on the posted agenda. We try to keep this to two minutes for each one. I have one speaker slip. Pat Bell. Welcome back, Pat. We missed you last week.
Thank you.
Or last evening.
First, I didn't get an e-notify about Week of the Family. I think that, and there's something else that goes on, I think you have to be signed up for the Parks and Rec list to get those. I think it's hometown days, actually, so you might want to make those go out to everybody, you know, the ones that are Parks and Rec but are of very broad interest. What I plan to talk about tonight is getting the public more involved in what the city is planning to do as far as projects. I have people come to me and say, "What's this? What's this?" And I say, "I don't know, I've heard it mentioned." I haven't even heard anything about that corner at Industrial and Holly. I know that that's city land, and it's being developed, but I don't know anything about it. And I think the city would be better off to come to the public early, early in the process, before the RFQ goes out, or the RFP, and say, you know, "We have this piece of land, we think we're finally going to do something with it," or whatever, so that you don't get that rumor mill going. You know, "They're digging up the dirt over there, they're probably going to do something terrible in our neighborhood." I just think, and I've talked to some staff who say, "Well, we haven't decided what we're going to do yet." Well, before you decide, let us in on the fact that you're in the process of deciding, so that there's not that surprise moment. I mean, people who watch, the four people at home who are watching tonight will know that you've talked about Wheeler Plaza before, but the rest of them don't know. So, I think, even though it's not legally required and you could do without it, I think it'd save a lot of grief later on if you got public buy-in earlier on such things. Thanks.
Thank you, Pat. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak on the public comment for items not on the posted agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to number 6. Rule of Consent Calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action, and any item removed will be dealt with at the end of our meeting. Anyone want to remove anything? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Excuse me.
Staff would like to pull item G from this agenda, and we'll bring it back at a later date.
All right, we'll eliminate item G and come back another time.
I would move a approval in of Consent Calendar items 6a through F, and I don't think we have any ordinances on there, so just make that motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved in second, are you approve the Consent Calendar's item A through F? Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Maude is absent. Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Moving on, item number 7, Reports to Council. Reports to Council are updates on key City Council projects by City Department heads and staff and City Council subcommittees. They are informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. First item is, or item 7a, Strategic Plan Update, Information on Fund Development Program. Mr. Malpigh.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. Jeff Malpigh, Administrative Services Director. This item is a follow-up item related to the city's strategic plan. One of the objectives was that the staff explore alternative fund development programs, and what we are talking about when we say that is a concept of creating a umbrella organization, nonprofit organization, that could then encompass the various existing foundations that already exist in town, such as the Parks and Rec Foundation, or the Library, or Senior Center Foundations, and others. We found mostly in the cities that we were able to get information from, that most cities that operate in partnership with foundations operate with specific foundations, very much like the model that we have now. We did find a couple examples of a citywide foundation where money flows into that foundation, and the board directs it to various specific functions. The report contains various pros and cons associated with both approaches. Staff found, however, that based on the information we had and the feeling of some of the folks we've talked to that work a little more closely with the foundations, that the model that we have right now is probably the best model to stick with, given the staff that we have and our existing budget issues that we probably wouldn't want to take on the creation and management of another foundation. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions, Mr. Malpigh? Mr. Lewis?
I have no questions. It's just the, the one area, the Partners for Progress, the city of Inglewood, where actually some of the largest employers got together, created their own fund to help fund some different things. Obviously, it seems like a, it's a pretty cool idea. I can see where the other ones might take away from other funding mechanisms and so forth, and there's some counterinterests there. That one, I just thought, if nothing else, it'd be good for staff and council, just keep an eye, if we end up having a nexus of employers that might be interested, you know, we have the green building industry, we have, you know, a few different industries here, maybe a Home Depot, a green building industry, and something else in town to help maybe consider something like this down the road. I thought that was a pretty inventive way of getting something done that might not compete with other organizations. Also, may have something in common with, like, San Carlos Green, so we could sort of pull together our green and recycling along with a couple of employers for that, for the infusion of capital for those kinds of programs. Just an idea to keep together for the future. I was thankful staff put the time into this, because I know sometimes we ask for these things, but I thought this is good research and good knowledge for all of us. Thanks.
Appreciate that. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Malpigh, and again, echo the, thank you for the staff putting the time in on this.
I'll pass it along.
Okay. The next item is item 7b, Strategic Plan Update, Report on Benchmarking. Police Chief and Fire Chief? Mr. Rothus, Mr. Frye?
Good evening, Mayor Grisilli, Greg Rothus of the Police Department. As you know, the strategic planning occurred, and the City Council had asked the police and fire to come forth with some benchmarks about our performance and efficiency within each of our departments. We prepared, each of us prepared a staff report. You can see some of the benchmarks you may have seen before, and others are new, and we present those to you tonight, and be happy to take any questions you might have.
I'll answer questions. Handout we got is Fire, right? Okay, thank you.
Real quick, if I can comment on the Fire, Mr. Mayor, and the members of the council, that, you know, also, we did that comparative analysis for the department. We included one department that is another consolidated agency much like ours, and I just handed out to you the cost comparison analysis on a per capita cost for the agency. You know, we did look into a number of different comparisons from staffing levels, training mandates, response times, from what we call shoot times or turnout times for the fire department, the time we get the call, to the time we start responding, and as you noticed through the course of that, that this fire department is the sixth busiest fire department in Samhain County out of the 20 cities that we compared ourselves with. So, there's a lot of activity that comes along with what happens here, and certainly there's, you saw the percentage breakdown of our call activity, of our medicals, fire responses, mutual aid. There are several hundred times during the course of the last 12 months that we had multiple calls going on at the same time that certainly had an impact on the organization, that we received help from outside agencies to assist us during the course of that. So, certainly, this will give us a starting place to go from and move forward, and as the chief said, we're certainly happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
So, I have a question, but just a couple of comments. Number one, both of you guys deserve congratulations. I think that both departments are performing really well in the benchmark analysis. You know, I can certainly, as for the police department, you know, our previous benchmark analysis as well as this one underscores what a high-performing department is, and so, and I think we all take a great deal of pride in that, and so, congratulations on that. As with the fire department, you can see the staffing levels have just, you know, have sort of gone down over the years, and the fire department is doing a lot with, not as much as they'd like, I realize that, and certainly some of the performance things that are just on the edge, you know, or is not as high as we might like, even though they're very high-performing, has to do with the closed-down station, the lack of the engine there. So, anyway, congratulations all around. I do have one question, and I just want to make sure I was reading it right, and it's potential concern, it's not about the report itself, it's just one piece of information in there, and that is on page 14 of the Fire Chief's Comparative Analysis Report, and it says that, I believe, that we requested, over 577 times, we requested aid from our neighbors in fire calls or some, you can clarify this.
That was just what I was just commenting on, that we had multiple alarms at the same time, so all of our companies were committed on responses, and we continued to get additional responses. So, based on our system of the boundary drop and the closest unit, as companies are moving up, that 577 times, we received assistance from other agencies while we had all of our resources committed already on other emergencies or other responses, better than two a day almost, as far as activity in that regards.
Right, and yet, the same fashion returned, it's only 50 times.
Right, and, you know, that just kind of goes from year to year. Sometimes, we'll pay right back to the 200, it just, for us, the way the stations are laid out, and it seems that we have more draw in than we give out, but certainly not an impact or reflection on our component, it's just that those calls didn't come simultaneous for them, or they had more resources available to handle what was going on.
Right, I mean, that being said, it's, you know, 10 times difference, and I'm sure the Fire Board's aware of this already, but, you know, the ongoing concern with, with, obviously, we put as much money as we can into the agency, but if we're overextending our need on our neighbors on a continuing basis, that can start to lead to a poor relationship. So, I just want to draw that out of the report, make sure that I'm seeing that right, and making sure that if there's, you know, it's certainly something I feel like we should be keeping an eye on, and I'm sure you are, but...
I think the chief said, the chief indicated, and I haven't seen his numbers before, this number next year could be 300 on one side and 200 on the other. So, I'm just saying, it doesn't, it's not consistent, it just happens to be 2008 happened to be that way.
We had an anomaly year, I would say.
Is that, okay.
I'm used to things fluctuating, but 577 versus 50 seem to me like maybe there's a problem, so I appreciate the clarification.
Yeah, that's, that is, that's a big one, but it does shift from year to year depending on the calls, so. Any other questions? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Royce?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo what Councilmember Lewis just talked about. We have both a police department and a fire department that is running pretty efficiently. They actually, we're actually fairly lean on cost and headcount in both of these, and the benchmarking, not only presented here, but this benchmarking information, there's stuff out on the web of any city you want to go to, you can look at how many people and what the population is, and do some real quick calculations on how lean we are. We're 10 to 20% lean probably compared to a lot of the averages up and down the peninsula, yet our response rates, whether in both situations, there's response rates, are very acceptable and actually exceptional when you think about the staffing that we do have and the shifts and so forth. And last, we're busy. We do have crime, we do have fires, a few, we have a lot of medical calls, a lot of assistance and so forth, so basically, those calls, which then, of course, create a patrol car or two, or a couple of fire trucks going out, they keep busy 24 hours a day, seven days a week, so thank you very much. Just also, I mean, Chief Frye and I had some time this morning, and we kind of went through some of these things. I do want to point out just a couple points that I'm going to be paying attention to, I think it's really important. Of course, we do have a joint fire department with the city of Belmont, we do have a calculation that we are basically paying 53%, Belmont's paying 47%. I think there's some really good data coming in as far as number of calls now, there's some metrics here on, that base it on assessed value of properties, since, you know, 55 to 60% of our calls are medical, I'm not sure that's really appropriate, but Officer Frye and I talked about really, with the Fire Board, really driving down and fine-tuning what the cost drivers are, and get to a point where everybody's paying their fair share. I'd love to get to a 50/50. That extra 3% is a little bit of an irritant to me, and I think, you know, it's pretty equal when it comes to the types of metrics that I've looked at. Secondly, I talked about response time, Brad hit on my second point, that's very interesting, that does vary, although one of the things that Doug Frye alerted to my, the improvements we've made is now we have qualified paramedics at all of our stations, which really helped the ratio here. And, let's see here, and my last point is, there will be some studies and some work done. We have a real critical issue on how we staff a fire department called constant staffing. We try to save money by utilizing the officers we do have, putting lean staff, I'm speaking of fire now, sorry, with fire, that there is overtime that's spent. We've found in this formula, how we operate it, it's better to pay some overtime than hire another new fireman, and yet, there are some alternatives of staffing up, and yet, in this economic climate, whether or not we'd want to do that, there's pros and cons. But we're still about a year, a year and a half away from those negotiations with the unions and so forth, but we will be having to do significant work in costing on how to run, you know, fire, what kind of staffing, what kind of overtime is acceptable to continue to run a very efficient organization, and again, efficient for both your organizations. So, I just want to highlight, those things are really important to me, and hopefully they're interesting to you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, also too, I'd like to point out that on that list, I did give all of you a note of how much time we spent assisting the state of California over the past 12 months, and for this agency to be out 45 days or so assisting the state is a significant number compared to years in the past for us to, and I might add, we've, we're just about, we're pretty close, 95% full reimbursement on that, so we're in pretty good shape on that.
That's good. Thank you, Chief Rothus, Chief Frye, thank you very much for your reports, and I think it's great every so often to get these benchmarking items so that not only the council's aware of what's going on, but the public's aware of it. Thank you all for your work and all your staff, all the staff time that you folks put in for this. Move on to the next item, New Business Item 8a, Consideration of Transportation Projects to be Submitted to the City and County Association of Governments, or Government, rather, CCAG by acronym, by January 27, 2009. So, they must be all typed up already, Mr., because it's tomorrow, for potential economic stimulus funding. Robert?
Thank you, Mayor. First, let me say that everything that I'm going to say is subject to change. Every day, there's more information that's coming out about this economic stimulus funding for transportation, and often, it seems to conflict with what I just heard the day before. So, the legislation in Congress is not yet final, it's still being marked up, and we won't really know until the bill's signed by the president. I mean, and that is projected to be perhaps February 10, February 18, sometime in that timeframe. So, and again, this is only dealing with transportation. There are several other economic stimulus programs, we're just talking about transportation tonight. And the goal tonight is to check in with the council and the community on the transportation project that staff should submit to CCAG tomorrow, and to be considered for this funding package. And I say "project," not "projects," because agencies are being strongly encouraged to submit just one project. There's a lot of paperwork involved in each project, and it has to go through a number of different bureaucrats, and it's kind of like they don't want the python swallowing the pig, and it just can't handle it. So, we should really look at one project in the range of $300,000 to $500,000, as stated in the staff report. Today, the number I was given was actually, $426,000 was the number. Seems to be, the numbers aren't varying as widely as they were when I first heard about this, so that seems to be about the range we're looking at. We want to be in a position to use whatever funds become available to quickly create jobs and complete needed transportation improvements, and that's the point. Now, there are three main criteria that guide, should guide our options. One, it has to be where the project's located. It has to be either a maintenance project on the federal aid road system, which are just the larger streets in San Carlos, or it could be on any road as long as it's a safety project. So, that's number one. Number two, this really has to be a project that's ready to go. After the president signs this bill, it's probably going to be a 90-day clock to use the money, or else you lose the money. It could be 120 days, but they're telling us 90 days just to keep us on our toes right now. And so, we should shoot for really having the council award the contract by May 11th, and it really takes like a month and a half to get the advertising and the bidding, and then get it ready for awards, so that means we have about, March 23 is when you should have these plans and specifications ready to approve. And the implication of this is that there really isn't time to work out a lot of details, because not only do you have the design to do, you've also got all this paperwork. because not only do you have the design to do, you've also got all this paperwork I was mentioning. So, and it really needs to be a clean project, ready to go with no opposition. Third, it cannot have any environmental effects. Has to be, you know, a completely clean project. And that's, there's more to that than would first appear, because the regulations have gotten tighter and tighter over time, and you can't even dig a fence post hole, because it may be, you might uncover cultural artifacts in digging the hole. So, even that requires an environmental sign-off and some research into the archaeological records. So, it's really restricted to something that's where you're just either overlaying an existing street, or dealing with an existing sidewalk and putting in curb ramps, or something like that. And even curb ramps, I have to be able to say, I'm not digging down below the level where the street was originally put in, which I think we can do. So, in the staff report, I listed three possible projects for consideration. The Safe Route to Schools project remains my top recommendation to you. As long as we take the sidewalks and the signs out of the project, and I take, I say the sidewalks for the reasons I just mentioned, that, one, we'd be digging into fresh dirt, two, we'd be probably dealing with some vegetation, three, we'd be dealing with a resident that owns the home, and possibly loss of parking, possibly loss of landscaping, and we really just don't have time to work through those issues. So, as long as we've eliminated those things, this project would meet all the criteria. The second candidate we looked at was a pavement rehabilitation project, and I've done some homework on that since submitting your staff report. And what I found was that we've done such a good job of maintaining these major streets in San Carlos, we don't really have enough work to use up the money that could come available to us, and they're just looking for one project. We have about two hundred thousand dollars worth of work on our major streets that we could justify right now. So, that doesn't work too well. And the last candidate, the implementation of the North-South County Bike Way on Old County Road doesn't work, because, again, it doesn't use up all the money, and it does require a fair amount of excavation. So, that one's out. So, I would recommend then that the Safe Route to Schools project be submitted, unless the sidewalks and signs, as I mentioned. The project would complete ninety-six curb ramps, which, these are also known as wheelchair ramps. And these locations, these ninety-six locations were based on an assignment that the council gave the TNC Commission a few years ago, to go out and look for locations near schools and parks that were needed. And so, now we can get that done. The project would also do seventy-six hundred linear feet of yellow crosswalk striping, and ninety-nine hundred linear feet of ladder striping and crosswalks to make them more visible, and sixty-three hundred square feet of pavement markings. And that would cost approximately five hundred thousand dollars to do that work. So, that's right in the right ballpark. Another option that the city manager and I talked about today is, if the council's looking to kind of spread this around a little bit, you could look at doing curb ramps on the east side. There are between, on Old County Road between Hall Street and Northwood Drive, there are twenty-one non-standard or missing curb ramps. And installing ramps at this location would serve as a route to school, that is, their route to these schools, and it would also serve as a safe route to transit. And the cost of that would be about seventy-five thousand dollars. So, you could, one way to look at this is, when we bid projects, we often do a base bid, and then alternate bids on top of it. So, we could look at the curb ramps, the ninety-six curb ramps as the base bid, maybe the twenty-one curb ramps as alternate number one, and the striping and pavement markings as alternate number two. And that would get us up to five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. It's good to have a little extra money on the table, so that if we get, so we're ready, and if somebody else doesn't use theirs, or if the bid prices come in lower, we can do more work. So, the next steps will happen quickly. On Wednesday, all of the projects in San Mateos County will be screened by the Task Force of Public Works Directors, and I happen to have been appointed to that group. And then, a special CCAG meeting, board meeting, excuse me, has been set on February fifth, two thousand and nine, to approve the projects. And then, the new due date to MTC is February ninth, two thousand and nine. So, if the funding is received, then the next action by the city council will be to approve the plans and specifications, and any other documents that we have to do. We'll have to update our disadvantaged business enterprise program, DBE program, for example. And we'll shoot for your next meeting, or the meeting after that, to get some of those things done. And engineering staff is working quickly to get the plans and specifications ready for bidding, and all of the Caltrans paperwork done. And with that, that's all I have, Mayor, and entertain any questions.
Okay, questions for Robert?
I'm just a little confused on the Safe Routes to School then, because of what's in the staff report, and then what you gave to us verbally. So, if I could just rattle these off, and you can tell me if I've got it correct, the curb ramps would be part of the project?
Right.
As you mentioned, possibly both west and east side, striping, and then pavement markings.
Right.
And that would be the three elements.
Right. So, of the eight sixty-eight that's mentioned in the staff report, about five hundred thousand is clean. Doesn't involve any environmental impacts. Thank you.
Other questions? I had a couple. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Well, I was gonna say, just. I'm sorry.
That's right. I can go after you, go for it.
Okay. I just want to make sure we go through the process here. There's twenty cities in the peninsula and a county. There's twenty-one members of CCAG. So, everybody's going to put proposals in. There's going to be a committee, of which apparently, you just mentioned you're a member. Of those twenty-one, how many are going to be recommended to CCAG, to the board?
I think it'll be basically a screening.
Okay.
Everybody gets their share of the pie, and as long as their projects meet the screening criteria, they're ready to go, then they'll all get, it's not a competition.
Okay, that's why I'm trying to understand the process, because I sit on CCAG, so I'm trying to understand what we're going to be looking at when we have our meeting. And I thought our meeting was on the twelfth, or not the fifth, but that's all right, they'll let me know when we're supposed to sit down. So, let's assume that of the twenty-one, eighteen of them passed muster, or seventeen, those will all come, and then CCAG's going to recommend all of these to the, under this act, in other words?
I think so, and that's what I understood.
And assuming we don't get all of the money for that, let's assume we get forty percent or fifty percent of the money, then it's going to be proportional, or?
I think.
I apologize for asking you this, but what I'm trying to emphasize is this, we can put this in, there's no guarantee we're ever going to get it, and I'm trying to get the, sort of, the odds of us even making the cut. You said we make the cut immediately, but then it's a matter of whether we get selected by a higher body along the way to actually get this money. And I'm concerned that we get all of it, or we get part of it, and maybe we have to have matching funds or something.
What I've, I didn't ask that question directly.
Sure.
Probably should have.
Sorry.
But what I've come to understand is that, that there's not like, once the act passes and the pipeline starts, there's really not a cutback anticipated. You know, once the dollar amount's identified, that's the dollar amount, that's the target, and the idea is to get this economic engine rolling with.
I understand, but I can't believe there aren't going to be a million projects across the country, and I don't know how we're going to fund them all out of the, I mean, you don't know the answers to this, and I apologize for, I was just trying to make sure that everybody understands, just because we picked one tonight, there's no guarantee we're ever going to get it. It'd be great if we did, but we may not, so that's, I guess I was trying to.
Act hasn't passed yet.
But even if the act passes, that's what I'm trying to get at, that we're not going to necessarily get this money.
We'll have to hope that our CCAG representative is persuasive.
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, in Washington, too. Anyway, thanks, Robert. Mr. Lewis?
I just have one other question, and after looking at the, this is sort of, as far as the Safe Routes to School and everything, I think it's a great plan, it's something that we've all been looking for, and so, I'm certainly in support of that, especially by your determination, you think that's the right way to go, and it's got a good shot at this. But I just have more of an internal question, I think, and that is, in looking at all the list of projects ready to proceed, I was kind of curious on the staff level, what the, how is the priority determined? I can understand the projects that you brought up tonight, and how you're sort of doing some of that criteria and evaluation, but also on this list, there's, I think, there's what, seventeen different things ranging from, you know, thirty-five thousand dollars to thirty-four million dollars. I was just wondering, curious on the staff level, how do we differentiate between a public works and SBWA or a park and rec project?
Let me comment on that, Councilmember Lewis. When the first request for economic stimulus packages came through, it was from the League of California Cities, and it was a bit more wide-ranging than what Robert is talking to you about tonight. And we were asked for projects that are green in nature, and we were also asked for projects, again, as Robert is talking about, that are doable in a very short period of time, and do not have environmental review, or where the environmental review's already done. So, for example, in the park and rec area, you will probably recognize those projects as from the Park Master Plan that council approved earlier a couple of months ago. And these are projects that are in the area of park building and park facility renovation. You'll probably recall that that particular consultant, when he came before the council, noted that many of our park facilities are from the nineteen forties, fifties and sixties, and those buildings and facilities need major renovation. And so, a lot of this has to do with electrical work, plumbing work, those sorts of renovations. In the case of the project from the SBWMA, you probably know that that project has been under design, and again, been before use several times. And that one, the design and environmental work is complete, and it's ready to go out to bid anyway. So, that's an opportunity, assuming, again, that it is an eligible project to cover some of those costs there. And that project also, by the way, has been submitted by some of the other cities that are in the SBWMA. And then, finally, on the SBSA project, again, council will recall that certainly Robert and his predecessor, Mr. McTary, worked on those projects, along with Dan Childs, who is the SBSA Executive Director. And again, that project is a small portion of the larger three hundred and forty million dollar project, but again, these are.
So, I'm just wondering, I understand where the projects come from, I think, you know, what I'm wondering is how staff takes, boils down these seventeen and says, you know, there's five hundred thousand dollars available, here's the ones that we're going to put forth. Does staff get together? I'm just curious, so we get from here to the final recommendation, that's all.
Right, okay. Well, I mean, you've witnessed it on the transportation side. It's almost like a child's game of what peg fits in which hole, you know?
Sure.
And sometimes, it comes down to that. And what money's available, and what can we match it up with? It's not always priorities, priorities based on what the highest need is, unfortunately. Sometimes, it's because the strings are attached. But this park and rec list, I think, that will take a fair amount of prioritization at the next level, and that will be through your CIP. You know, that's when it comes to the council.
Okay. Yeah, it does, I mean, it does seem like we ought to have some sort of a format, because perhaps there's going to be more stimulus packages forthcoming in the next year, or at least that's what there seems to be some discussion about. So, just to have some sort of format, how do we get to the priorities, and is it always the, you know, criteria that drive our priorities, or perhaps these things batch into different areas? So, thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Royce?
First of all, Robert, I want to say I appreciate, you only have on job a couple of months, you're moving very fast. Thank you. And you're very broad in your thinking, so thank you on that, too. And I agree with everything that you've said. I mean, the flexibility to show, to put a report out and come to the meeting and make adjustments as you're learning more is really good, it's good work. Safe Routes, as everybody, most people know, I'm very much a proponent for that. I think deferring sidewalks for a while, it is a complicated area. There's neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks now, there's houses and neighbors and all that, so I think that's probably a good choice also, to postpone some of that. And I'm really glad, my last point is, that you mentioned the east side. I, from walking, wife and I have walked a few times either through the depot from west to east, over to the east side, walking down to businesses, or to the marketplace, or the Arroyo opening under the train tracks. A lot of that sidewalk is not in best of repair, there's some cracks, there's some raised areas, there's, in fact, I took, I have to say, I drove this time, I didn't walk, a ride this weekend, the seven hundred, about seven fifty-five, I think the address is, there's one section where the sidewalk ends, and there's junipers. I don't know if the sidewalk's underneath, I don't think so. There's junipers that totally get grown totally up to the curb, so the sidewalk ends. And then, just south of that is the Branson and the cement mixing place with gravel and rock and so forth. So, you know, we have our east side residents there, it's definitely be nice to beautify, like we beautified a lot of other parts of our city. I could understand why we can't put signs and build new sidewalks, but if there's anything we could do on repair, enhancement, clean up a little bit, and make it more attractive along Old County, I'd like to look at a way to doing something on that side of, that side of our town of San Carlos.
Okay. We have some folks that would like to speak on this item, so I'll call your names. Marie Khamazid, Kemazide, I apologize if I missed that, Suzanne Emerson, and Pat Bell. So, a few folks who'd come up, and have your comments.
Hi there, my name is Marie Khamazind.
Sorry, I blew that one.
I want to thank all of you for all the hard work that goes into making these tough decisions, and I want to thank Robert for all the hard work and to, for putting all the work into getting the grants together so quickly. First and foremost, I hope that you would recommend the Safe Roots Project for the stimulus funding. Safe Roots is more than just giving safe routes to the schools, it's about reaching out to children and engaging them in a healthier lifestyle, and caring about the environment. I think, you know, once we get the Safe Roots in, we would like to be using those Safe Roots and doing that. I just want to touch a little bit on sidewalks, because I think they get a bad rap, and I noticed there were two streets in the grant, the grant that I looked at online today, that I thought were in the proposal. And one is on Phelps, Phelps Road. Phelps Road is very narrow, it is the main road to Arundel Elementary, and it is so narrow that cars have to bob in and out of parked cars to get past one another, and there are no sidewalks, and so the children have to walk in the street and bob in and out of parked cars and oncoming traffic. So, it is very, very unsafe, and I think when you live on a street that's the main entrance to a school, that you could give up your parking so the children don't have to walk in the street. I think that's unrealistic. The other thing I want to talk about is on San Carlos Avenue, there is the crossing at San Carlos and the lower playground area at Arundel. That is zoned a thirty mile an hour zone, and it should be a twenty-five, and there are children crossing there all the time, it's an uncontrolled crossing, so you don't have the flashing signal lights or beacon lights, and so it's very, very dangerous, and children have to, or hopefully the parents have to step out into traffic to stop the traffic so they can get across. I hope maybe something could be done in that area with this grant money. Those are two very dangerous areas that stand out in my mind. That's all I have to say. I hope you can consider the Safe Roots as, for this grant.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. Suzanne Emerson, followed by Pat Bell.
Good evening, Suzanne Emerson of San Carlos. I thanks the city for giving a high priority to the Safe Routes programs. I would emphasize that I think there's high value and a good cost effectiveness to the striping and crossing, marking. It's only paint, so it doesn't cost as much as the curb cuts, but it really can be effective at making a bunch of these crossings more safe for the children, including the one, the crossing of San Carlos Avenue at the bottom parking lot at Arundel. So, I would like to see those in the base contract, and not just put in as an option for, in case we get extra money. Also, to the extent we have additional funding available down the line, I would like to see the bike route given a high priority, helping to get people, helping to enable people to make that transition from an automobile commute to a bicycle commute, and help to reduce our greenhouse gases would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Emerson. Pat Bell?
Hi, again, I want to echo what Randy said about Robert. He is just wonderful, wonderful to work with, and is doing a great job. I support the Safe Roots to School, and I want to thank Robert for adding in the east side. I asked for the curb cuts on the east side, and I don't want to take anything away from the Safe Roots to School, but if we can, that, the east side part of it is seventy-five thousand dollars, and as Randy said, it's just atrocious over there. You can't, anyone who uses a wheelchair, or in my case, a scooter, cannot go down Old County Road, you just can't. I tried to go on the walkabout when I, whatever, those people came to see our wonderful town. I tried to go, and I took my electric scooter, and I had to drop out, because I couldn't get there. So, thanks to Robert, and I would be. So, thanks to Robert, and I would be willing to have that be an add-on, as Suzanne says, start with the striping and make sure we get something done, but I'm glad to see that the east side is on the list. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bell. One more speaker, Preben Naidoo. Did I say that right, Preben? Cool.
I'm Preben Naidoo, and I'm a voting member on the Youth Advisory Council. I'd like to say that on my way to a meeting at, at the youth center, I, my parents went, were at their work, so I had to scooter down. I felt that the roads on San Carlos Avenue, I mean, the sidewalks on San Carlos Avenue were very insufficient because of the fact that if somebody were to scooter down there, or skateboard down there, or something, like some form of transportation on the sidewalks, they would have to stop and go every single time there's a bump in the sidewalk, which is about, one every three or four squares. And there's one stretch on San Carlos Avenue from Alameda de los Pogas to around the Arundel area. It is so bumpy that I had to walk the whole entire stretch, and I became late for the meeting. So I just wanted to address that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, gentlemen?
What's your pleasure?
Well, I have to tell you, coming to the meeting and reading through this, I was actually more inclined to go with item two, because I just thought it might be simpler, but after Robert's presentation, I'm in agreement with, with the city engineer. And I would note that Project Three, which he has on here, I know is also coming to the BPAC at the county level, and it looks like a good project, so maybe we'll get funded that way. So I think the Safe Routes is a, is a good idea. I don't think, I know a number of speakers said, let's go ahead with the curb ramps and some of these other things being in the, not being treated as alternatives, but on the other hand, I understand Robert's thinking on that, and it's, it's a good idea to make a project flexible, and so I don't have trouble with the alternatives that he's suggested.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments?
I would just say, I'm not quite clear on what Robert says as far as throwing the, the paint in on it or not, but I would agree that the paint seems to be a real effective way to go, and I don't know what the cost figure is for that, but I would encourage us to try to make it a main part of the, the project if possible, just because I think the visual deterrent is a good one, and it would be a lot of bang for the buck, so that would be my two cents.
Okay.
As a recommendation, not to stop the motion or change the components.
Royce?
First, a comment about public comment here, and this isn't my idea, actually, I attended the Transportation and Circulation Committee meeting, and we have a member from that group in the audience right now. They're thinking ahead, because they know that our traffic light at Chestnut and San Carlos Avenue got turned on about eight hours ago, and now we have an extra blinking light that's all wireless. And so I would, I'm not recommending that this would go onto the entrance to Arundel School crossing San Carlos, it may not be effective, I don't know, but I would just like to add that to your list as you look at considerations of venues or locations, if there would be valuable use to that at your next meeting, if you could. Okay, thank you. Regarding the topic at hand, I agree with everything, and with Councilmember Grokot here, I think we're going the right way with Robert's recommended, I could support all of that. So the only question, Robert, is, if you could just clarify, is, on the east side, does it qualify safety, and would we be ready to go, could we do anything on the east side that fits in, that you could fit into a plan here, or not?
I think those 21 curb ramps would qualify-
Okay.
-under Safe Routes to Transit, as well as-
And anything under the general, this cleanup and repair work, is that fit, or does that get complicated?
Of course, the city's ordinance calls for repair to be done by the property owner, and we have recently notified one property owner at the corner of Chestnut, Cherry and Old County Road, to do some repair. So that, that, that would not necessarily require grant funding.
Okay.
Now, there are also obstacles like the poles in the middle of the sidewalk, or, those would also be obstacles to pad on her scooter, and that's gonna require some, some more engineering to fix that problem. But I don't think we could, I think those are complicated, those-
Okay.
-problems to fix with, and we can't, not really appropriate to this particular funding package.
Good. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Robert. Mr. Rubens, do we need a motion to recommend item number one, the Self, Safe Routes to School, or what, what do you?
You know, you don't really need a motion on this one, because it's, it's discussion, if there was any, any changes to the recommendation that you'd like to let staff know about.
So basically, you just say, we sort of, if we all, assuming, it sounds like we all do, we let staff go with the recommendation that they proposed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, any other discussion on this? Okay, so be it. Robert? Get our money. Mayor Griselli? Get our money. If I'm not mistaken, sir, yes.
But I don't, I don't think I'm a congressperson yet to vote on the, or whoever the heck's gonna vote on that, that's, that's another whole story.
You may be on your way.
Maybe on my way, yeah, me and Jack, yeah. Okay, move on to item 8B. 8B is consideration and selection of a development partner for potential development of Wheeler Plaza, generally bounded by Walnut, Cherry, San Carlos Avenue, and Laurel Streets. Mr. Al Savay, sir.
Good evening, I'm the mayor, members of the city council. Wheeler Plaza is currently owned by the city of San Carlos and used as a free parking lot to accommodate downtown patrons. And the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency also owns a couple of other parcels. Agency owns the parcel, small commercial parcel at the corner of Walnut and San Carlos Avenue, and also there's a six-unit apartment building on the other corner there. And these three parcels, which includes the parking area, comprises the two-acre potential development site. And perhaps the first question you would ask is, well, why Wheeler Plaza, and why now? And let me back up just a little bit, but Laurel Street is a success story in terms of how downtowns go, and most recently, for instance, we had the Urban Land Institute come to San Carlos and take a look at our city, various aspects of it. And one of the things that they told us is that our downtown is a, is a real gem, and that other cities across the country would pay millions of dollars to get to where we are with our downtown. However, to keep it that way, we can't rest on our laurels, and we need to look toward the future and plan to maintain the asset that we have.
Like the pun.
So back to the question, you got that.
Very good, Al, let's honor the laurels of Laurel Street, that's good, that's good.
So back to the question, why Wheeler? Well, it presents a very unique catalyst opportunity for the continuing success and resiliency of our downtown, and there's a potential there to add new life to the area while maintaining the character and the integrity of our downtown that's so important to everybody. I think what we've seen from the popularity, the Pacific Hacienda Development, for instance, is that downtown housing attracts residents who prefer more urban lifestyle, or people who are looking for a more affordable option than the traditional single-family home. Now, if you add retail, commercial, or office space to that, this also offers a renewed vibrancy for the retailers in the downtown. They benefit from having an active customer base right there in downtown, within walking distance of the restaurants and the retail places and the grocery stores. Another reason this is before you is there's, there's a long history to Wheeler Plaza, and for about a decade, Wheeler Plaza has been considered, at least conceptually, as a development opportunity site. From a historical perspective, back in 1999, the Redevelopment Agency considered, at that time, a mixed-use development for a project there. As late as 2004, there was additional interest from the development community, and there was some, in 2004, there were some other conceptual designs that were prepared. The Downtown Urban Design Guidelines, back in 2003, there was a downtown visioning process in our community, and as part of the visioning process, there was an objective in that, in the guidelines, in the visioning process, to investigate the long-term opportunities for deck parking and mixed uses in, on Wheeler Plaza. The use of Wheeler Plaza has been more recently discussed in some of our economic documents, for instance, the 2007, or 2006 market study, and also the Economic Development Plan that was adopted in 2007. And these documents suggested that the city consider a mixed-use project that would feature retail housing on this reconfigured site. Most recently, this is a city council objective for staff, and the council has charged city staff with bringing forward a recommendation for action on a potential development partner for Wheeler Plaza, and to explore the economic development possibilities to stimulate revenue for the city. Now, in terms of the selection process, this is how we got to where we are today. In September 2008, the Redevelopment Agency sent out a request for qualifications to qualified firms and individuals to look at partnering with the city of San Carlos, and in response, the city got 10 submittals for that RFQ, and they were all very good. The next step was that the city put together a selection committee. We had Mayor Griselli, Vice Mayor Randy Royce, myself, the Economic Development Manager, Mark Sawicki, and also Frank Spadacchio of RSG, who's our Economic Development Consultant. Now, of the 10 candidates, the selection committee took a look at those 10 candidates and narrowed them down to six, and of those six, the selection committee held interviews over a two-day period, and narrowed, and interviewed all six candidates, and narrowed it down to two candidates, which are for you this evening, and that is Intracorp and Silverstone Communities. So those are the two firms that you'll be interviewing a little later in the evening. The selection committee has opted to recommend a much higher level of public review for this, or awareness and transparency of this process, due to the high-profile nature of Wheeler Plaza and what we're talking about here. So the selection committee is recommending that the full agency board complete the interviews of the developers, and this is really not a standard operating procedure in most cities, and in San Carlos for that matter. Normally, it would be city staff that would be coming forward to the council with a recommendation, or some, a selection committee would have done all the interviews and made a selection, and then made a recommendation to the city council, but not in this case. Tonight, each of the development teams will be given 30 minutes to make a presentation to you, and then there will be a 15-minute question and answer period, and that will be followed by questions and answers, or public comment, rather, at the discretion of the mayor. And I think that it's really important to note here that, that this is not about a design process, it's not, no design has been developed, there's no drawings. This is about selection of a partner, to partner with the city of San Carlos on this idea of a development at San Carlos. So it's simply, again, to select a partner, and if the development team is selected, the next step would be that city staff would come back to the city council with an exclusive right to negotiate, and once the team is put together, there would be a community engagement process that would engage the community, the Chamber of Commerce, the public, the property owners, the Economic Development Advisory Committee, and others. So it'd be quite an engaged community outreach process. So finally, the recommendation then, for you this evening, is, is to do the interviews with the two candidates, and Silverstone Communities will be going first this evening, and they'll introduce theirs, themselves to you. So do the, the interviews, and then deliberate about selecting one of the two firms for partnering with the city, and then following that, direct staff to prepare this exclusive right to negotiate. That concludes my presentation, I'm available to answer any questions before the interview, or we can get started.
Well, someone may have a question. Any question for Mr. Savay? Mr. Royce and I are a little more familiar with this, because we were on the selection committee, so.
No questions yet.
Okay. So I guess, Silverstone, and we've got approximately 30 minutes to hear your presentation, and then we'll, we'll go from there, with some questions.
So we have some slides, I don't know how we set us. There we go. My name's John McMorrow, I'm the president of Silverstone Communities, and this is-
Jonathan Ennis from BDE Architecture.
Yeah, he's the architect. What I thought we would do is just kind of go through, basically, these points in our talk, talk about the design vision we have, some of the opportunities that we've seen with this site. John will address the architecture, we'll talk a little bit more about Silverstone Communities' experience in infill development, and then a little bit about the public outreach program that we typically do. And if you have any questions, or actually, if you have any questions as I'm speaking, feel free to interrupt me, just chip right in. The first few slides are of Laurel. What we do to get a sense for what we want to build in a community, or what makes sense, is we really spend a lot of time in the neighborhood, and we talk to the people that, that live close by, we talk to as many people that we can find that are stakeholders that understand the neighborhood. And what that helps us do is kind of find what fits. The first thing that we want to do is make sure that we build something that fits within the fabric of the neighborhood. So, everyone knows Laurel is great, it's really a fabulous street, it's got shops, restaurants, it's quaint, people know each other, it's friendly, they're saying hi, it's got coffee shops where you can meet your friends. So that's the kind of place that our communities really do well. Our buyers want to be in a place where they can just walk to shops, restaurants, transportation, and then easily walk back to where they live. So they really like that energy, and that's the beautiful thing about Laurel and the surrounding neighborhood, is it's got that energy already. So we wanted to make sure that we do something that fits that kind of village flavor that Laurel has, and that's kind of drove our design process in the first place. One of the things that we saw as, as part of the opportunities, is this particular piece of property really has a prominent corner that I think can be utilized to benefit Laurel and serve as a connection between Laurel, Walnut, and the downtown streets. The corner there would be a great place, we think, for kind of a gathering location. As nice as Laurel is, there isn't really a place that has a plaza with benches and a, and a water feature that's pleasant, that you can sit there and just kind of enjoy the day. So we think having a gathering place right there on the corner would serve both as a connection to Laurel with the other locations, and a gateway to Walnut, but it also, when you're coming from the east, there's already a monument there, but when you're coming from the west, which is where most people live, there's no real statement that, here, you've arrived at downtown. So we think that's a great opportunity to, to create a gathering place, and we see that, having benches, it can have a water feature, but something that's attractive and inviting.
Mr. McMorrow, I apologize for interrupting you, but one of the things that I thought our staff had told you, is we aren't even close to deciding what, what's gonna be up there. I think one of the things we didn't want to do was say, it's gonna look like this, or it's gonna look like that. Was there a disconnect here between staff and the applicant?
Yes, the applicant.
Okay, because that's the whole point of this, we don't want to see your, we want to have a general, a general point on this thing. All of a sudden now, there's gonna, people are gonna come up to me tomorrow and say, oh, there's gonna be a gathering place there, if you're selected, and there's, that's not even close to what we're doing. I apologize for interrupting you, but I'm very concerned that, that all of a sudden, we're gonna have a design, and then it's gonna be 180 degrees or completely different, if it ever comes to pass, if we select you. So I'm, I'm a little concerned and a little confused on where the disconnect was.
I think there has been a little bit of disconnect, then, because what we are going to do is talk about our concept, not the specifics necessarily, but our design direction. And I think that, that is important, that you select a developer that has a similar vision to what the city has in mind, otherwise you're not gonna get-
Mr. Weiss? I don't mean to throw it to you, but I'm-
Well, I mean, my understanding is each of the applicants were given the five questions that we've given to the council, and it was our hope that the, that the applicants would take those five questions and address those as part of their presentation. Certainly, each of the applicants will have their own ideas and thoughts in terms of the, the design mode, I think as long as everyone understands that what we're looking for really is a partner here to help- really is a partner here to help us come up with the ultimate concept that will be developed on the site. But it is up to each of the applicants to present their own proposal in their own fashion, and then it's up to the council to choose which of those applicants they would prefer to work with.
Through the chair, is it a request for qualifications at this point? We're at the RFQ stage, is that right?
Yes, it's a request for qualifications, but we are looking to select a partner here that we can work with to...
I think I get that. I guess what I'm trying to differentiate from is a request for proposal versus a request for qualifications. And I think, again, what the mayor was expecting, perhaps what we're expecting, is we're trying to take this in increments so that we have full, everybody's buy-in, step by step along the way. And so, you know, again, my two cents would be if you can stick to the qualifications part of it and try to step back from any sort of conceptual description or direction, merely your other experience, other projects, and overall vision for what might be, but not, I think, you know, if we get too distinct, we're jumping ahead of ourselves here.
Again, I'm not criticizing your vision or your qualifications in any way. Obviously, you made the cut out of 10, so we think your company is very, very qualified to do this. But I want to make sure it's a level playing field. If perhaps your proposal or your speaking speaks to this, and the other folks come up and go, well, we didn't bring any pictures because you told us not to, I want to make sure that we have a fair playing field. That's all I'm trying to do. I'm not criticizing, you know, like I said, your company, because you wouldn't be here if you, we didn't think you could do the job. But I just, I'm very concerned about specifics on some of this, and I know I probably threw you completely off your game there, but there's a disconnect here to me, and I'm concerned about it.
Well, hmm. And I think, and I don't have much depth in our design, this is more schematic, but I think when you pick a developer, and I'm not really familiar with the other developer's concept, but if it's, if you would rather have, like, I don't know, a six-story high-rise or something, then frankly, we're not your developer. So it is important that you understand, I think, conceptually, what we feel comfortable building, because otherwise, it doesn't make sense for us to go forward either. So I don't want to get into specifics, but these are some of the opportunities that we see with this site, and that's what we were asked to touch on, is why do we want to do this in the first place?
I would say speak to the upays and design directions, but stop short of presenting the concept.
There's a bit of overlap there. Let me see how I do.
Do your best.
And again, I apologize for interrupting you. I, like I said, I'm just trying to make sure this is a level playing field so that everybody, believe me, if the other folks come up and start showing pictures, I'm going to be saying the same thing to them. So you just happen to be first. So I don't mean to be...
They can show all they want.
I don't mean to be rude or impertinent with your presentation.
Okay. But what we, we do see the fact that the site is so centrally located as being really key to our interest in the community. So, you know, as we, and I'm sorry, I don't know what's too specific, but one of the things that we saw with this site was the opportunity that's presented just by its location. As you can see, it's really located in the middle of everything. And those arrows represent all the pedestrian pathways that currently go into the site. So I was going to touch on that for a bit. But the pathways right now, just, they're not that inviting. It's pretty cold. And so we think that there's an opportunity here to really make something fabulous out of where the site is located and come up with pathways that really connect the community, really connect Laurel, and make that, our site flow, if you will, between Laurel and The other opportunity that we see here is just with the parking itself. Right now, the parking, it's extremely convenient, and it's right there behind the retail, but it's really not that attractive. You've got telephone pole lines and cars everywhere. I just think that that's an opportunity, at least that we see, to clean up the site. We underground the telephone pole lines, and I'm sorry to get back to the building, but to hide the cars. We don't think that parking lots are particularly attractive, but we do think they need to be convenient. So we don't see big, tall parking garages there. We see retail on the ground level that flows in between the two sites and is convenient, but hidden. The other opportunity we see here and that we're interested in is just along Walnut. We've spent some time with the shop owners along Walnut to sort of figure out what does Walnut want to be, and we think that accent retail along there will really well complement the Walnut Street facade, but it won't dilute Laurel. I think it's really important that any residential project not have big box retail or anything that's going to draw away from Laurel. Most cities have found that the reason why they want housing, and this is for-sale housing, we only do for-sale, is that it adds income in, say, 24/7 foot traffic, if you will, to an already existing and thriving retail area. So it's really to complement the retail and not dilute it, and that's what we're after. You know, and the other benefit to projects like this, and this may be a bit of a surprise, is that the schools benefit from a residential project like this. Most of our buyers are move-down buyers, they're empty nesters, they're young professionals, but they don't have kids. So residential projects like this pay the school fees in full, but they don't generate the children. So our projects in Los Altos, for instance, it's a highly impacted school district, one of the best in the Bay Area, they endorsed our project that we are just finishing up there because of the fact they know they get the fees, but they don't get the kids. So it's kind of free money for them. The same thing with Cupertino. That's probably the best school district in the state. It's highly impacted. They endorsed our community down there for the exact same reason. They know they get the money, but they don't get the kids. So that's really one of the reasons why I think it's a good idea with the other ones to move ahead with a project in this location. John was going to talk about the architecture, but maybe not.
I can talk about something.
Okay.
Talk about the architecture that you've done at other places and...
Exactly.
It's the general scope. And again, please understand what I'm trying to do here, believe me. We respect the fact that you've taken the time to make this proposal, and like I said, you wouldn't be here if you weren't one of the top two out of 10. So I don't mean to jump in. Go ahead.
I'll just turn the picture of the architecture off for the moment. So our firm focuses on multifamily housing. Probably 80% of what we do is infill housing, three and four stories of wood over parking structures in downtown areas. We have projects under construction of this size and scale in San Jose, Palo Alto, two in Mountain View, Santa Clara, several in planning in San Francisco and other areas. So this is really, this type of project is our strike zone. It's what we focus on. You know, we don't have an office that's half retail, half museums, half, you know, we pretty much focus on housing. We do some high-rise housing, but primarily, it's this type of three and four-story housing. So that's kind of our background. We're just completing a job with Silverstone right now in Los Altos. We would definitely, I'll just start with these green and sustainable building practices and not make that a footnote. I think that that'll be a highlight for this project, and that'll be a focus from day one. We have projects that are currently under construction and currently for sale in the Bay Area that are LEED-rated and also Greenpoint-rated. Those are the two prevailing systems. I won't go into a lot of the details about those, but certainly, this project will be, you know, from inception, from concept through to finish, we're committed to those green building practices. So if you want to know more about some of the specifics, you can ask that, but I won't go into that kind of detail right now. So we're very excited with Silverstone. We think the site is fantastic now as a location, and that we want to amplify what's great about it. I think John was talking about that. We want to amplify the great, you know, make the retail better on Laurel, maybe perhaps add some on Walnut. We think it's a great downtown walkable site. It's great for living. There's lots of amenities. You don't have to jump in your car, you know, to do your basic retail shopping. It's obviously transit-oriented, and we put a lot of families downtown near transit. You get a lot of sustainable building practices just by taking a site like this and making it better. We feel it's important to add the concept of some type of gateway between Laurel and Walnut, and that could be an architectural experience. It could be potentially an open space with gathering that would, you know, serve Laurel and serve this project and kind of mark the entrance to this part of the city coming from the west. So we kind of talked about that gateway potential at the corner of San Carlos and Walnut. One of the initial things, I think John touched on it, as a concept, we want to definitely make the parking hidden from the pedestrian experience. We want the parking, we're going to go subterranean with the parking. It's going to be more expensive to go down than up on this site, but we feel going down will make the project better, will make it more livable, more pedestrian-oriented, and will have that first level reserved for the retail. So it's easy in, easy out. It's going to be attractive parking, well-lit, painted. It'll feel comfortable to park there, and people won't feel as if those spots are lost. I think that's really an important thing to maintain. We think that the style of the project should grow out of San Carlos. We think that we do not want to bring a design concept from an architectural magazine and try to shoehorn it into this site. We think that a traditional-type architectural, architecture, if we have to talk about a style, would work better here. Our firm's architectural approach is not to bring an idea to a site and try to sell it, but really try to have the idea come out of the site by talking to the stakeholders, the people who live there, the people who shop there, of course, the, you know, the city and all the planners and the people who've spent a lot of time putting this site together. So the community outreach process will be intense, and it will be committed to that. And Silverstone has a very unique community outreach process. They assign staff members in-house to each part of the neighborhood, and they're committed to focusing on a small group of neighbors and collecting those ideas. So that part of the architectural process is really, you know, gathering that information of what the site wants to be will be, you know, doing that community outreach. We're not talking about a meeting one or two times in a community center. I mean, it's really, we have to get to know these people, that they're stakeholders, and they need to, we need to look to them to support the project as much as they can. We want to work with them. So in terms of style, that kind of wraps it up. You know, we had a lot of things to talk about the building. We want the building to be rich and varied on the sidewalk, to step back so that it's not a, you know, 200-foot wall. We want to step, you know, step back out and in and use planting to, you know, have a great pedestrian experience. We also want to step the building up and down so that it doesn't present a long, you know, massive volume on that street. We want, we definitely want a rich and varied volumetric approach to that, and I think that will go well hand-in-hand with the traditional style of architecture, which you kind of saw a little bit there. I think John has a few things.
Yeah, so, thank you. And actually, one of the main reasons why BDE was selected to be part of this team was because their expertise is craftsman-style architecture. It's important that you look at the architect who's part of the team. If you pick an architect who specializes in modern buildings, they will not be able to execute a craftsman-style building the same way. It's just like asking a painter who is a modernist painter to do an impression of his painting. They'll come close, but they won't quite get it the same. So the rest of our, let's see, how do we turn this back on?
You want a particular slide, John?
Where it was? I can just click.
Okay. You just pick the one you want, if you can see it there.
Well, it's down lower.
Just click on that.
This one?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is probably more what you were after, this is about Silverstone. We are probably the largest developer of urban infill in the Bay Area. Nobody has done more projects in the Bay Area in the urban infill side than I have. So this is a slide of our most recent project in Birch Terrace. It's a little bit more villagely, villagy. We are just finishing this project, the 78 units in Los Altos. It's right on El Comino Real. It's about a block north of San Antonio Avenue intersection. The city wanted residential, just like you guys, because they knew it would support that corner, which they're hoping to really make a dynamic retail corner for them. This is a project where we had million-dollar homes behind us, and we worked tirelessly with the neighborhood to make sure that they were completely happy with this scale and this density of a community right next to their backyard. So by the time we got to the podium, there was no opposition, zero. So when we stand up there, it's, we're talking about what a great process it's been. Now, it's the same for Pleasanton, right in the middle of an existing neighborhood. We work with the people constantly to, one, get their opinions, but the most important part, we found, is to stay in touch with them, even if they don't have an opinion to express, to let them know where we are. People get so frustrated if they feel like they're not being heard or they're not being addressed. So we are in touch with them constantly. The Pleasanton project, again, no opposition. Same with this project in Cupertino. This is right at the doorstep to the Town Hall. We were selected because they wanted a signature project right at their doorstep. They've completely redone their whole Town Hall area with a theater. A new City Hall is beautiful. This is just up from Apple. One of the things that's interesting about this project as it relates to the Wheeler Plaza site is there's parking behind that facade there. Those are just residential units, and in the middle, at ground level, is all of the retail parking, because there's 19,000 square feet of retail. And the retail parking is completely separate from the residential parking. There's a separate driveway on your right there for the residential parking, and that goes down. So the retail's all on one level. At the ground level, it's very convenient, and the residential's separated entirely and goes down. The next project is 109 units. We're just finishing up these homes in Milbrae, also on El Comino Real. The city, or the city's been great to work with, the redevelopment agency. A couple of things about this structure that are pertinent for the Wheeler Plaza site is, one, this is all with prevailing wage. We work tremendously with the trades in this area. We understand the importance of that. And this is also two stories below grade, one of which is fully below the water table. Probably with the geology of Wheeler Plaza, we will also need to have a garage that's below the water table. We know how to do that. We know how to do the geology, set the pump systems, and the toughest part is to get all the approvals from all the agencies who chip in on that. Silverstone has tremendous financial strength. Our partners on all of these projects have been Hearthstone Advisors. All of our projects are done with cash. There's no financing at all, and there's no deeds of trust. Given the current economic times, we have branched out to forge new financial ties as well, so that we want to make sure that any projects that we have going forward will be fully funded. But for projects like this that are well-located, and if they're well-designed, there's financing out there for them. If you have any questions, I can address them.
Thank you.
Questions? Mr. Skowkott?
Yeah, a couple. I noticed in the report or your presentation that you gave to us in advance, and I think this was the case for both, and maybe staff gave them this direction, I'm not sure, but it talked about the city or the redevelopment agency or both, I guess it would be the city because we were the ones that own it, selling the land that we currently own to the developer. And I guess my question, is that a must-have, or is that just something you put in, or, you know, where'd that come from, if you know?
As opposed to...
As opposed to, yeah, having a land lease, that we would retain ownership of the land.
We're not looking to build a rental community, and we want to build for-sale. So it, and you really want to get income in this location. You want people who are going to be shopping and spending money. So the types of buyers that we have, they're looking to own their condominium, which they would do in a leasing situation, but now their monthly payments are higher. So they, they want to know they own the space, they own the property, they're not at the mercy of some ground lease down the road. So it really wouldn't be attractive.
So it's just a matter of, it's not a matter that you could not have for-sale units, but what you're saying, it would be, it would be not as attractive with for-sale units sitting on leased land. I know, you know, for instance, I have a friend that lives on, in-house, multifamily residence. The land is owned by Stanford University. There's a 99-year lease. Probably they'll renew it. There's no issue there, and they don't even, I don't think they pay anything more than a dollar a year for the, for the land underneath their house. But it is... underneath their house. But it is leased land.
Right. And actually, a lot of those properties are having difficulty now financing at Stanford. But for us, it would just complicate it. It would make it tougher to finance, and it'd make it tougher for our buyers. It just wouldn't be as attractive.
Okay. If staff wants to jump on that question as well, because I did, I don't know where that came from. And my issue, my concern about it, quite frankly, if I can go ahead and say that, is the city's owned this land for, you know, since our inception. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about it, but, you know, I feel a little uncomfortable taking land that we've owned for that long, that was put aside for a purpose, which is parking, and then, you know, selling it, and not owning it any, any longer. And historically, we've, although we just recently went into a deal where we sold some land, as a city, we've been very reluctant to sell our assets. We've tended to keep a hold of them, especially when it comes to land.
Yeah. And I was going to say, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, but we own the parking lot, we own the land there. When we get the parking lot, you know, for the public use, as I understand it, there's some mechanism, staff, correct me if I'm wrong, with some mechanism, hopefully, that we get that land, figure out a way to get that land back, or that, that parking, public parking back. Is that correct, Mr. Spivey?
Yeah, there's a number of different possibilities. So it's just one of the...
But you, you don't have any problem with us getting the parking, the public parking back?
Right. Really, what we end up doing is, we take the structure, and we condominiumize the whole thing. It's all divided up into ownerships. The city would end up owning the same number of parking spaces that it currently does. So what the city's value is today really will be the same once we're done.
So I just wanted to make sure you, we spoke to that. You spoke to that in our meeting.
You did, okay. All right. And, you know, I don't want to be misunderstood in a different way, which is, in my opinion, the, you know, rental versus ownership, I would much rather see people own than, than be leasing or renting. So, but I wanted to find out about the issue of the land ownership, because, like I said, we've owned a parking lot there for so many years, and it's a question. The, I wanted to ask, if I might, why residences? You've touched on it a little bit, but I would like to have you expound on that. In my opinion, when you look long-term, or even just out, you know, a few years, like, when I say a few, I mean like 10, 15 years, residences, while we get a bonus at the front end, and we, you know, if it's near transit, we get a, at least we used to, we get a bonus from the state if they have any money. But, you know, we get that, we get that upfront initial bonus. We would get, in this case, with the condominiums, we'd get a tax boost on, on property taxes. But down the road, it ends up costing you money, especially residential development. So, you know, we have a downtown that is thriving. I could see perhaps maybe something there that might add to the vitality in terms of new businesses, but why, why residences?
Yeah, that economic question is one that's been looked at. Is it beneficial or not for a city? And if you do a cost-benefit analysis, one, I think ongoing, the additional retail taxes that are generated, as well as the property taxes, if you, if you look at the whole package and compare that to the services that are required for a community like this, it actually makes money. It's not like a single-family de-cash subdivision, where your increased police, your increased fire offset any gain in the revenue. So this type of community is, is much lower impact on the services, and the gain from the revenues more than offsets the expenses that are generated.
Well, I'd like to see some actual...
I can get you a...
Yeah, it'd be interesting, because I would think just the opposite, especially when you add, when you're going density and high numbers. But perhaps you're right, and if you've got that, it'd be interesting to see it. Can you speak to protecting the existing businesses during construction? You've probably had some experience with that, I would guess.
Yes. What we do is, one, we meet with all of the businesses. All of the businesses back up to this space. So they all get their deliveries there, their trash, all their services. And what we're proposing to do is pretty intense there, especially undergrounding the power lines. And we're going to need them to clean up their facilities in the back, just if we want to create a pedestrian-oriented community back there. It needs to be cleaned up. So we would work with them to define exactly what their hours are, and what their needs would be on a daily basis. And then we have somebody onsite. That's their whole job, is to make sure that those people's operations are not interrupted. The last thing that we want to do is create a headache for the city and the shop owners. So we work to make sure that there's no impact, or it's minimized, to the retail spaces, as well as, you know, trucks and such going offside, tracking mud. You know, we do everything so that that doesn't happen. We realize that, you know, this is a long-term process. It takes 18 to two years to build something like this. That's a long time, and it has an impact, and we realize that that's an inconvenience. So we go out of our way to minimize that inconvenience as much as we can.
Thank you on that. I just would, you know, comment that when we did Laurel Street and tore it up from, well, some part of San Carlos Avenue, and then Laurel Street all the way down to, what was it, the 800 block, I think? And it was, you know, in terms of duration compared to 18 months, it was short.
Right.
One-third of that, if even that. And, you know, quite frankly, we saw businesses go out of business, as I think partly as a result of the construction. So something that is close to my heart, a big concern. I don't want to see the, you know, the advantage to the city, if there is one, be made a disadvantage to existing businesses. You mentioned subterranean parking, and you seem to be pretty strong about that. What if, you know, you also talk about going through a public process. What if through that public process, you found out that, you know, people would just rather not have a project at all if we're going to go away from having on-grade parking, which is, you know, quite frankly, it's one of the things I think that makes Wheeler Plaza, or makes Laurel Street work, is that we do have at-grade parking, and there's a lot of people who like that, especially if you're getting up in years, you don't like to go into a parking garage and bump into poles and so forth. So what if, going through the public process, you find out, gee, people actually that want to use it for retail still would rather have at-grade parking?
Hold it. Let me be clear. Our parking is at-grade for the retail. So the subterranean parking is for the residential component.
Mm-hmm.
They would drive down. I totally agree. The retail parking, people are used to it being convenient.
Yeah.
We think it's going to improve the parking, because right now, it's open to the air. This time of year, it's not that great parking there. You got to run, you get wet. So what we want to do is have nice, well-lit garages that have tall ceilings, they're not like a crummy space, they're as vibrant as you can make the interior of a garage. But then you have very convenient, well-defined, comfortable passageways from the garage to the retail corridors. So that slide I had that had the arrows, you connect all that up.
So you, when you say at-grade, you're still going into a garage, but it's at-grade?
You go into a garage, you go into a structure, but you don't go up or down. You just park right at the surface and flow to the retail.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Griffin, I want to make sure, we only have 15 minutes allowed for all of us to ask the questions, so I want to make sure that we get to them all. So I'm not trying to cut you off, but more questions, less...
Two more.
Okay, no problem.
Sorry you had the 15 minutes. I didn't know about that.
Okay, that's all right. You didn't, now I'm, that's why I want you to know. Not a problem.
This is not, wasn't in the RFP, and we haven't even discussed it as a council, but it occurred to me, so I want to ask the question. Could part of the upgrade to Wheeler Plaza be storefront improvements on Laurel? And have you ever worked with a project like that, where it's not just, you're working on the site, but as a developer, you're also working with some kind of program to upgrade, you know, the adjacent businesses in terms of, you know, if we had a facade improvement program that went along with this project? Have you had any experience with something like that?
You know, we've had communities where there are redevelopment fees, and that money goes to the redevelopment agency, and they act as the instigator for sign improvement programs, or whatever needs to be done. So we don't directly get involved in that, but you have an agency that that's in their purview. So we certainly work in that environment as well.
Okay. And my last, my last thing that I have here is not really a question, but it's more of a comment. And if you're selected, it gives you some indication, at least from this council member, of what I think. And you mentioned craftsman style on it. You know, I'm a building designer myself, and I don't really believe there's any craftsman style for this size of a project. You know, you're not going to, it's all tack-on, is what I'm saying. It's not authentic. Craftsman style was a true style, which you know.
A flavor.
But, that said, I like some of the things you showed. I like the, I agree with you about the modern, I don't think, we have a modern building in San Carlos, nobody likes it. But I do like some of the softness that you introduced in the wood over, over concrete and so forth. So I just wanted to comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Joyce?
Nobody likes it? I'm not sure if I'd agree with that. Anyway, just a couple of quick questions, out of respect...
Mike Scanlon likes it. He works there.
Yeah, okay. So just a couple of quick questions, out of interest and time and so forth. This is pretty simple, really. And can you speak a little bit to your record on delivering projects of this scope on time and on budget?
Okay. Well, the reason, one of the reasons why we have a financial partner who's dedicated their fund to us is because we've never been off-budget. That takes a lot of work. We're very, very detail-oriented in the drawings, and really, that's where the cost comes into play. So you've got to come up with a set of drawings that's airtight in the first place, otherwise you will be late and over-budget. So we've never been over-budget. As far as timeframe, some projects do end up running longer, for whatever reason. You get into the ground, and you find out there's contamination. In this case, the water level may be higher or faster. So it's a little hard to predict the length of time. Once you get to the point that you're building, though, all of our projects have been on time from that point. So once you get to the superstructure, so it's, time is, time is money, especially with, well, interest rates have come down, but they were awfully high. So we work to make sure we're delivering on time.
Because I think one of the strengths, it seems like, in your qualifications, is that you guys have done a lot of work in similar situations, in similar-sized communities.
Yes.
But time and budget, speaking from someone who's been through a few of these projects, is everything, really. Especially when you come down to impact on store owners and city and all that, is trying to minimize that. So, and of course, I'm sure we'll be contacting all the references, but I just wanted to see what sort of level of party and, and your track record on that.
And I can't emphasize enough the time that our team puts into the plans, because so often, somebody who's not experienced will get halfway into the building, and they have a problem. That shuts down buildings like this. You can't start, keep going on one part while you're trying to figure out another part. It's all interconnected like a Rubik's Cube.
As part of the retail part, you know, the conceptual idea, or where you think the opportunity might be here? You know, our, it seems like our retail sort of stops. It's almost difficult for the businesses on Royalmont Street to get continuous retail traffic. So is part of the idea, is part of the possibility, either with the gathering area combined with some additional retail, that we can start to wrap that retail traffic? Is that part of the idea?
That is the idea, but not enough retail that it's going to dilute Laurel. So it needs to be more accent retail, smaller scale, just like, oh, what's across the street? You know, there's enough activity with the jewelry shop and those types of stores that there's pedestrian traffic on the street. We would just want to complement that more than anything.
And then, one more quick question here. And by the way, congratulations on the English Channel swim. That's, that was a good part of the reading.
Thank you.
Anyway, he swam across the English Channel. That's pretty impressive. Anyway, combined architectural thing, as well as the developer monetary part, the other examples of businesses that you guys, I mean, of buildings that you've done, look pretty good. Although, is there an opportunity, you know, economically, to be a little more aggressive with the stepbacks of the height? Because the vertical massing of this is, at least from, from my point of view, is part of the problem. You know, when the buildings just go straight up from the sidewalk. And I realize you guys are speaking to that. Some of the pictures I see there aren't necessarily as aggressive as I might like to see it. You know, we have the Pacific hacienda development. I think most of that, the vertical massing, is really well-hidden in it, and it blends really nicely. So I guess the question is, given the examples that we've seen, and given you speaking to some of the stepbacks or setbacks, you guys know the lingo better than I do, is it potential that the economics can handle some slightly more aggressive stepbacks, so we help with the village feeling?
Yeah, I think that's a common theme we see in downtown Mountain View, downtown San Jose. It's a common theme. And one of the prototypes we have for the third and fourth story, where it really comes into play is to do some unit types, perhaps. We've never done them with Silverstone, but we've done some townhomes, where the upper floor of the townhome is maybe the bedroom level, and you don't need all this space, and you can have a setback there. That also provides a deck for the living level. So we're looking at some building sections that would accommodate stepbacks in the second and third story, without, you know, losing unit, unit density.
Okay.
So we've grappled with that before.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Vice President Joyce?
Yeah.
I have one question.
Good.
Just one?
Just one.
Thank you.
So, although it'll be a long question.
Yeah.
It's going to take you half an hour to ask it, yeah.
All right, go.
So I'd like to gauge your reaction to four elements or components of the project. And when you hear the four of them, I want to go back to see what you think are most critical to you for your success, your bottom line and all that. And then, secondly, what would be most important for us in San Carlos to think about, from a priority of the project? And for, first is all the environmental green LEED certification. Second is density setback height, which is all kind of one. Third is, we talked about open space, gathering spot. And fourth is affordable housing. Basically, green, density, gathering spot, and affordable housing. What's most important to you, and what should be most important to us to pay attention to, to make this a successful project?
Say something, what you're thinking?
Of those four, what is the most important?
Yeah, because they're all four important. I could come up with 10.
All four of those are important to us, but as far as...
Pick a couple that you think are most important, and pick a couple that you think are most important to the city.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think, I think it's critical, it's a great opportunity to do something on this location, but you don't want to do something that's wrong, you'll have to live with it forever. So I think design and architecture is a big part of what you're selecting, because you're heading down a direction. And I think that leads to density and setback. You can't have, well, this is now my opinion, a very high-density project here, and right next to a quaint village-type street. I think you're going to end up with a big clash. So I think it's, it's critical from the city's standpoint that they end up with a project that fits. And to me, that's not necessarily high-density. It's certainly not a building that has its facade all the way down the ground. It's got to have variation, so that when you're walking by it as a pedestrian, which this whole area is pedestrian-oriented, you don't feel threatened, if you will, by this big massive structure next to you. It has to be comfortable. So I really think that's probably paramount.
And second?
Affordable, it is going to have a affordable component, so that's not, and we talked about open space. You want to talk about green a little?
Well, I think density and, works into green, because if you study the LEED system now, you know, we want to have a certain density higher than what's there. Not too dense. We want, you know, John's right about the setbacks in the neighborhood. But you'll get a lot of green points because of the, because of the density, and because of the mixed-use, because you're putting the cars under the buildings and not building them next to each other. And you're going to get some points if you do provide an open space. So three of those kind of work together. And that, you know, I think as an architect, we want to build, your first three points is really one concept that needs to work together. So I would say that all those are really one.
Yeah, and I'm not sure it's really like a city issue, but it is with us. If you look at contributions to greenhouse gases and the environment, buildings are about 47% of what's contributed. And of that 47%, about 25% of that is what the building is made out of, and the other 75% is how the building operates. So one of the things that we're really excited about as a company is all the technologies that are coming out today. And there's such an emphasis on green building and green technology, that new products are coming out that, that frankly, we can put into our operations. We're working with a company called Clear Edge Power, that will have a natural gas system that converts natural gas into electricity, so our buildings won't necessarily need to use electricity. So it may not be important to the city, but it's important to us, because I think these days, it's, it's everybody's responsibility, and that's how we see it.
And then just to finish the question, anything different that we should be thinking about?
As far as the, on the green side?
Those four components, they would differ than what your values, priorities would be?
I'm not sure I understand.
Would there be any different prioritization that we should be thinking about, other than what you've just mentioned, of the four components I've talked about?
I don't know about the prioritization. I just feel like... I don't know about the prioritization. I just feel like it's important that you do have a project that the community can be happy and proud of.
Okay.
I think that's a prioritization you need to put in there. Community support. You can prioritize all those and solve them perfectly. Without community support, you're not gonna have a successful experience.
Thank you.
Having, you know, been through the process with the gentleman before, and I don't really have any specific questions. I think you've answered some of the five that staff gave you, and again, I appreciate your, your patience with this process, and, and thank you very much for, for coming here, and we'll have the next proposal, and then we'll discuss it all. So, thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know how you close them.
We're doing fine on time.
If they need my list set up. Thank you for the time present.
We're doing fine on time, because it only took fifty, forty, fifty-five minutes. Yeah.
I have breakfast.
You asked a couple.
I apologize.
You know, I don't get a cookie. I know.
I have to answer.
Nothing. Okay. Cookie. You want a cookie, Bill?
Relax.
USB out, is that maybe?
No, it's not.
This is great, because I wanted a two-minute break, anyway. Perfect.
But you're killing our ratings.
Yeah, our Nielsen.
You know how many people, two channels?
You can rent this space for advertising.
Just that little sign.
Yes.
What's our rating?
Gross revenue?
I don't even know one there.
I do.
Really?
Thought that was gonna be our way to avoid showing any images, you know, we can...
Yes, leave that door open.
All right. So, my name is Phil Kerr.
Mr. Kerr, we want you to sit and stand next to that microphone for it, because it's all being taped, and you already heard me the first time go after people, and I'll go right after you, too, if I think we might be overstepping here.
Well, I think, I think it would only be fair if you did.
Okay. Just wanna make sure. Thanks for understanding.
Yeah, and we had a coin toss there, and I, I feel for John. John and John are both great, and being a developer can sometimes be tough, and so I appreciate them taking the first, first hit there. So, before I, before I really start on the introductions, my name's Phil Kerr. I'm with Intracorp, but I won't introduce our whole team. I just wanna start with the process and how we start the process. We start the process by thinking about who lives here. We start the process by thinking about who's gonna live, who's gonna work, who's gonna shop on any site that we work on, in any location. And every location's unique, and so when we bring a team together, it, you really do have to start, and the way you're going through the process is right, you have to start with an idea of, of, okay, let's go blank slate. Let's take ideas, let's bring them together. Let's get excited about this. What's possible? What are the uses that we can do here? And you need to bring together a team that's gonna facilitate that. And that's what you are starting here. It's a very difficult process. I mean, I grew up in a town very similar to San Carlos, and it's, it's, you know, you go back after college, and you, oh, wow, there's a new building there. I mean, things don't change that fast. And you say, it's, it's change, and change is hard. And so, you have to take that process slowly, allow time for the process. And that's what we do when we come into any process, is we say, how can we facilitate it? I don't live here. We bring together a team that does live here, people that do live here. We work with the community members, and we say, okay, let's get all this together. Part of that team is, is myself and Intracorp, and what we bring is, is the leadership, but also the financial capacity. And we help bring together those questions of, is this economically viable? How do we make this work? How do we get funding for this? But then, we bring together the architecture team as well, and Sylvia Kwan and Joseph Chance are here, from Kwan Henry. And Kwan Henry's worked with us directly. They're a fantastic firm, and they're a real leader in sustainable design. And they're real good at focusing on detail and the specifics, and that's what makes or breaks a great project, is the little details. In addition, Van Meter Williams Pollak will be a consulting architect for us, and I've worked with Fred and Rick for a long time on visioning processes. We did about six months of work on the Japantown project down in San Jose together, just visioning what this could be and working with the community. We had probably fifteen community meetings, bringing together the community there. BKF Civil Engineers, we're working with them on Santana Road project, a great firm. They, they know how to do this. That's a critical component. And then Renew Properties, Chris Wachman. Chris is working with us on this project, because he knows San Carlos. And it's so critical to have, have that element as part of our team. And so, our goal is to figure out what is the mix of uses on this site, and take those uses and start putting them into the mixture. And say, okay, what, how do we pull this together? Retail, parking, housing, open space, gathering places that we've talked about. How do you bring those all together into one project, into a project that'll work for San Carlos? That becomes critical. Community benefit. No one cares what it does for Phil Kerr. No one cares what it does for Intracorp. You care what it does for San Carlos, obviously. And it's really important that we figure out, working together, what are the benefits of this project? What does it do for the schools? What does it do for income, for, for the city? What does it do for, for people living there, shopping there? Community continuity, it has to fit in. It has to work with the surrounding community. Livability, it has to be a place people wanna live, shop, park. Critical element. Flexible design, this is critical. This gets me so excited, because you look at a piece of property and you say, what can it be? And that, what can it be involves saying, okay, how do we take one piece of property, right now it's being used for, for parking, still accomplish that, but get more and better use out of it? That ability to take one use and use it multiple ways, putting solar on top of a parking garage. You know, that should be obvious. But it's, people don't think that way sometimes. They'll say, how do we do two uses on one place? Healthy and efficient living. Green is everywhere. I mean, every project you see today is gonna be green. But, what does green mean? It's healthy living. It's efficient living. It's resource reduction. And it's the specifics of green that matter. It's what do you see? What do you feel? How do you live? Do you live better? Is it healthier? Why? Strong economics, critical element. And this is what, what I can bring to the table, is you want a project that's gonna get built. And there are lots and lots of images of beautifully drawn projects that weren't built. And so, the, finding a way to work together and lending the role of saying, okay, how is this viable? What are the trade-offs we're making? It's a series of trade-offs. Critical. Because development's difficult. It's difficult to find consensus. There's different opinions and interests. I got into this, because it's difficult. And Chris and I were talking as we were walking over here, and he said, hey, how'd you get into development? I was with the Olson Company before with, working with Intracorp, and I did resort development previous to that. But, I got into it because there are these trade-offs. You pull one lever, another one goes the other way. There are no right answers. And that's a challenge, but it's really interesting. Design considerations are essential, economic pressures. It's a tough time right now, and the economic pressures are real. You asked a question about, you know, have you ever been over-budget? Every project was over-budget for years. His costs kept going up, but costs would go up 15%, revenue would go up 25%, and developers were all brilliant. Everyone wanted to be a developer. It's great. That's not what it is today. You gotta be, you gotta think, you gotta really understand the costs. You gotta really get those costs under control. You gotta really manage those costs. Because for a while, it was easy. It's not easy. Understanding different sources for that. We're doing a project right now down in San Jose, working with the San Jose Redevelopment Agency, and we're going aggressively after Prop 1(c) funds. $240 million of state money, if the state money's ever released, available for infrastructure. Getting that into your community, you gotta do it. The federal money, I mean, federal stimulus, we're all looking to that. That's how projects are gonna happen. Figuring out how to design a project that takes advantage of those other monies is critical. That's, that helps get projects built that are great projects. You can do wonderful things if you've got extra income, extra money coming in to help build it. Specific challenges that are unique to San Carlos and this location, I mean, walking around, seeing it, talking to the community, reading the blogs, understanding what people are saying, is, is essential. And some of it, you know, infrastructure, parking, traffic, shopping, limited school capacity, you can look at them, those are just words, but it's understanding, what's the driver underneath each one? Parking, okay, what about the parking? Where do you shop that you wanna be, make sure you have access to? So, really diving into that. And we haven't begun that process yet. Yeah, we've walked around, we've seen that, you know, Chris knows this, this place very well, knows, knows San Carlos, knows the site. But, you know, we need to understand it, not from my perspective or Chris's perspective, but from a whole bunch of different perspectives. Great opportunities. I mean, it's a wonderful opportunity that the city has. We're, we are honored and humbled to be included in the process, because it would be a great opportunity for us to be involved. To find solutions, to create the balance, to generate returns. You know, everyone looks and says, you know, you're a developer, you're in it for the returns. Yeah, we're all in it for some returns. We're in it to, to make a better place on credibility. Time, to spend the time that we all have to put into a project, to make a great project. It's gotta be great on the other end. Bring residents downtown to drive shopping. Replace the parking in a way that's convenient, in a way that improves the parking even. Generate revenue for services. School fees out of this, park fees out of this. Going after things like Prop 1(c) funds or federal funds. Finding ways that say, okay, back to the community benefit. What, what does this do for us? Active community gathering places. Really making those work. Designing buildings that leave a lasting legacy. Critical. It's, you've got this site that will become something. It's, it's San Carlos' site. What's it gonna be? It's something you're gonna look at for a long time. It's gotta be great. Enhancing the streets, and then, this is my opportunity to make an investment in San Carlos. We put money in. It's an opportunity to say, okay, let's get this money together from these sources and put it into here. Make that investment in San Carlos that has a return for us as a developer, a return for the community, and a return for the city. So, I wanna talk about uses, and Mr. Mayor, to your point on specifics, what I wanna talk about here is the different uses potentially on the site. So, feel free to interrupt me if there's, if this is too specific. But, the, the uses that we see are number one, parking. That's what's there today. That's the thing that people will be afraid of losing, because it's what's there today. How do you do parking well? How do you bring it in, hide it, make it convenient, make it easily accessible? How do you also do creative things like put solar above the parking, as I mentioned? If you're gonna put parking in, really making it something that's either underground or hidden in the back, that has a dual benefit. Gathering spaces. Now, gathering spaces could be an outdoor plaza. It could be a pedestrian street activated with retail and outdoor seating, or it could be an indoor spot. It's the bookstore. It's the Starbucks. It used to be the post office, and we bemoaned that for a long time, and it became Starbucks. People all go there, and some people, it's peace. But, it's the local coffee shop. But, that becomes a gathering space. It's a place the community gets together. That's critical. There's a park down in Santana Row, where we're doing a project right now, and it's just a wonderful, small plaza, because they've thought about the uses. Not just the space, but how's it used? You've got a kid's play area. You've got retail, activated, active use, all this retail right on the street. You've got a fountain. You've got green grass, actually synthetic grass, which you first blush, you say, oh, that's terrible, but you don't even know it's synthetic. It looks great. Federal maintenance.
We're laughing because, we're laughing because you just don't know how exciting turf is in this town.
Inside joke, Mr. Kerr. Sorry. You know, the, the active outdoor space, these active pedestrian streets become critical. There's a lot of potential, potential for pass-through. If you look at Pacific Hacienda, there's the pass-through through it. There's a great pass-through from Walnut to Laurel here. How do you activate that? Activating in a way that might combine residential and retail. Bring people onto the streets. Outdoor seating, public benches. All of this is possible. And then, the residential component of it, homes, bringing that into the mix as well. So, parking, retail, outdoor space, homes, bringing this all together. Now, where, how? That's all to be figured out. This is Pacific Hacienda, project Chris worked on. I think it's a wonderful project. I think it's, it's got a beautiful feel to it. You know, it's four stories high in places, but it's got a real feel of San Carlos. Bringing that same kinda feel to San Carlos, to this site. Sylvia, do you want us just to talk a little bit about the, the village concept that we're pursuing? Don't, don't push on this, because the thing is sticking up there.
Okay, sorry. So, the downtown village. You've kind of given us the perfect site. Thank you. You've made it easy. Because Laurel Street and a couple of the other surrounding streets are already pretty much on its way to becoming the vibrant 24/7 downtowns that we all aspire to, and it's, you've done it organically, which is the key. So, now we've got an infill site. And all we can do, really, to make it better, is to enhance the site. We are suggesting that we were bringing in a lot more residents who will use, who will walk to the shops and the restaurants, who hopefully walk the Caltrain to go to their jobs. And there's not that much more you need to do to it, except for the concept of connections, which I'm sure we'll be talking a lot about during this presentation and during your Q and A. And the connections are, we are hoping, besides the obvious vehicular ingress and egress that's gonna be around the, the site, is also the pedestrian connections. Here are some examples of how you might take the pedestrian's landscape street. And as Phil talked about, how do you enliven it and activate it? And one of the concepts, of course, is you either put retail on both sides, possibly on one side, definitely housing on top. It's done everywhere that, that you can think of as a place you wanna live, probably, and we agree. Oops. So, a little bit about just the concept of architecture, where not, these aren't any concepts for this place, but projects that we worked on, is San Carlos is gonna tell us what the architecture is gonna look like. We come with absolutely no preconceived notions. In fact, Pacific Hacienda might have been a perfect solution for that site. And maybe the project we do may have some similar characteristics that really pick up on it. And Phil's right. To me, when I look at Pacific Hacienda today, I think San Carlos. But, is it the appropriate solution for this particular site, for Wheeler Plaza? Perhaps not. We will know by engaging the community, talking with you, the council, and there will be an appropriate response. Here are a few projects that we've done, the team has done, and you can see that every single project responds to a different community, and it should be so. What I'm gonna show you next, and I'm not gonna make you read every point, is the LEED scorecard that we did for the project that we just brought to LEED Silver, which is a residential multifamily project. We're going, we're getting LEED Silver, which is actually fairly easy to do. And we did it with Intracorp, so we know we can easily achieve a Silver by just planning ahead a little. Here's one concept. Next. How come every time I press it, it says next? Anyway. So, here's a project we did with Intracorp, which is, we're taking, it's a very creative solution in the sense that, as you know, roads are typically places you absolutely don't wanna look at. But, instead, we did an innovation here. Here, you know, we're getting green points, of course, but here's what we did. We reduced the stormwater runoff. We created a view for the community to look into, because this is fairly low. It's about, you know, four, four stories. And all the surrounding buildings that may be taller look down on this roof. And the third thing we did was we used zero-scape, which, as you, most of you know, it means simply that after a little bit, no more irrigation will happen. It's just gonna grow pretty much on its own with, with water or rainwater. So, you use drought-tolerant plants. So, that's how you become creative in your solutions. And by the way, I should say, whether we use similar materials or very different materials, but just the thinking behind it, if you look at the, the cladding on that particular building, it's using a, a green material called Trespa, and it's a rain screen, which means the building there will, the residents will have indoor air- Here, you know, we're getting green points, of course, but here's what we did. We reduced the stormwater runoff, we created a view for the community to look into, because this is fairly low, it's about, you know, four stories, and all the surrounding buildings that may be taller look down under this roof. And the third thing we did was we used zero escape, which, as most of you know, it means simply that after a little bit, no more irrigation will happen. It's just going to grow pretty much on its own with water or rainwater. So you use drought tolerant plants. So that's how you become creative in your solutions. And by the way, I should say, whether we use similar materials or very different materials, but just the thinking behind it, if you look at the cladding on that particular building, it's using a green material called Trespa, and it's a rain screen, which means the building there will, the residents there will have indoor air quality, they will never, ever get mold because it's a building that allows air to breathe on the outside of the building, thereby never allowing mold or moisture to gather on the inside. You can't tell by looking at that building, can you? It's just another cladding. But there are many, many creative ways to design green buildings, and that was sort of the emphasis of a little bit of my talk.
Honorable Mayor, Councilors, very nice to have, it's a privilege, actually, to have the opportunity to work on Thossey this evening. I will be quick to respect your time. The purpose of this slide is to try to provide better insight into the potential scale of development at Wheeler Plaza, and so, if we go like this, we can see that Wheeler Plaza actually relates, very interestingly, to the scale of Pacific Hacienda, and can be done perhaps in a format like that, and respect and utilize the setbacks and step-backs that Pacific Hacienda employs on its Elm Street frontage. And at the same time, still leaving space in your property for parking that can be oriented closer, more conveniently to the retail, perhaps on its own parcel, and also for pedestrian open space.
Chris, you're getting close to the line here, I think, on this. Sorry.
Okay.
I want to be fair. Somebody else didn't, they didn't, you know, it's not designed, so, sorry.
Yeah, this is not a building proposal.
I understand, but you're getting close to the line, so maybe you can move on to another.
On to the next slide. There we go. As important as designing buildings, and that previous slide was not to suggest building design, as important as designing buildings is going to be the open spaces within the overall site. This project will be different from most developers' projects, which are, most are private, this is a public-private project and process. This is the citizen's property, so these open spaces will be public open spaces, opposed to private open spaces. And there are, you know, many forms of open spaces people love. They can be an active walkway, a place, a connection. They can also be a plaza and a courtyard, they can be both, and we're hoping that there'll be opportunities for multiple kinds of open space in the project. These answers will be determined in the collaborative and consultation process with the community. And finally, if this Wheeler Plaza development is to serve the community, connections will be a very important part of it. Connections to the street, connections to the retail, connections to the, to the train. Connections will be established by turning the improvements, the development, out and not in, with the use of doors, with the use of stoops, and with the inclusion of businesses as mixed-use within the development. Thank you.
So I really appreciate having both Chris and Sylvia on the team. I want to talk just briefly about the economics and some of the economic trade-offs. I think it's very important to start working at this early in the process, and just as it's important to look at the lead elements and the green elements early in the process so it gets built in, understanding some of the economic trade-offs becomes very important early on. You know, as density, you asked about density and the benefits of density, you know, there's real economics of density that are important to take into consideration. This is looking at the economics of the parking garage and the cost per unit of the parking garage from an above-grade garage and underground garage as density increases. And so if you spread that cost to build the garage as a service and said, okay, let's build this new garage, how do we do it? You could do the same with the open space. Building open space, building a beautiful open space with plaza costs money. You spread that out across. So it's important to understand that and be upfront about it and say, okay, if you increase the density, your cost for each unit for building that parking garage goes down. In addition, an above-grade garage gives you a lot of different benefits. Now, you can build a garage that's a standalone entity if you wanted. That standalone garage could be wrapped so you don't see it. Ground floor, retail, right out into the retail, surrounding retail with additional parking above it. The cost of that garage is tremendously lower, is significantly lower, on the order of $20,000 of parking stall lower than when you start going deep into the ground. It also allows you to phase it. It also allows you to go after federal funding or state funding for a parking garage as its own entity. It allows the city to own it. Those are the kind of, that's the kind of thinking that you'd go through and say, okay, these are important considerations. Community process is critical. I think it's very easy to talk in the community process, I would just say on the community process, talk to our references. I've been through in-depth community processes. I had a project in San Lorenzo, we had 450 people show up to the first community meeting. You know, I've had projects with two people show up, re-prepared, but it's the same level of engagement, those, talking to people, getting out, meeting them, and doing it in an effective way. Open house formats versus sitting there and having people come in and all have one person dominate the conversation, allowing everyone to be heard, becomes critical. Engaging the community leaders, having a phased process, talking about uses first before you start putting up a plan. I mean, if someone comes into my community and puts up a plan, I'm going to be, you're going to resist. It's easy to say no. We need the community's help. We need them to help us give solutions, we need you to help us give solutions. All those solutions come together. For instance, in Santana Row, we went through the process, met with the community, said, okay, here's how we can do it, we went down, took a plan down, it's right next to an adjacent building that's got about eight three-story townhomes, and they said, you know, you're putting 30 units right across, 30 homes right across from us. Why don't you guys go back and put townhomes like ours? These townhomes sell for $1.5 million. Have you guys looked at the economics? And I said, yeah, we've looked at the economics, but we'll go back and look at it again, and lo and behold, we went back, we designed the project with these super-high-end townhomes surrounded by other units, other homes that are less expensive, but now we have these 10 beautiful three-story townhomes designed that came from the community. And that kind of response, you know, great ideas come out of that, and it's a really important piece of it. Entitlements are critical in the process. Understanding the entitlement process, making sure the secret process, the California Environmental Quality Act is moving along, that you're moving through the right processes while working with the community as well, is critical. There's some community comments from the blog, the White Oaks blog, they're out there right now, and this is before we've even started. Mom and Pop vibe, the Burgers or Barnes &amp; Noble, the importance of parking, we need every parking space we have. This is an economy that cannot afford to build. People understand the economic situation right now, and really just starting to, the blogs are great because they give you, give people a chance to provide input. So, our commitment, our commitment is to work with the community, and the community means the residents, the business owners, the business operators, and the landowners in the area. It means working with city staff, it means working with the city elected officials, all of you. It's essential that the community, the city, and the developer all come together, and there's a series of trade-offs there. And oftentimes, everyone's a little, hmm, you know, I had to give this, I had to give that, but then you end up with a project that's feasible. Worked, but it's already been done. There's been a lot of work done on Wheeler Plaza. We need to go back and look at that. We need to go see, I mean, sometimes you feel like, oh, we've been through this before, and there's someone in the community that may have been through this already, and they say, you know, let me tell you what's going on already. To listen, be open to ideas, to keep the same number of parking spaces and provide convenience for parking, I mean, this is a parking lot. It's useful that way, no one wants to see that go away, how do we make that work well? Minimize construction impacts, as I said, there's ways of doing it, maybe build the garage first so that all the parking is replaced before you take out any of the rest of the site. That's a way to do it. That might be critical to having a project that can actually get built and move forward. Using smart design to improve traffic flow. Design is so amazing. If you think about wheel luggage, I know it's sort of a random example, but for hundreds of years, people carried around their luggage, and finally someone put good wheels on it. That's just good design. That's just someone thinking, hey, this is a better way to do this. Traffic parking, you know, you go to places now and it tells you exactly where the parking spaces are, exactly how many of them are available, where they are. It's great. It's just a smarter design. Why weren't we doing that before? Good design is thinking that way. Putting green roof, I mean, that just seems obvious. Putting solar on top of an empty space, why not? Understanding the school capacity. The schools are critical for people, and they want to understand the impact this will have on their schools. We need to talk about the school fees that it'll generate, and who will live here, and how that will impact the schools, and understand what the current capacity is at the schools. Connect to the streets, Chris talked about the connections. To step back, now, I'm saying that in kind of a jovial way, step back in a number of ways. Step back to building, but also step back every so often in the process. Find ways to fund public space that will be well-used. It costs money to build these things, it costs money to build great places. How do we do it? We can help bring that funding together. Explore federal and state funding opportunities, explore new retail opportunities, community bookstore, cafe, we're committed to doing that. To work with adjacent property owners, maybe there's an opportunity to acquire some additional land here to really bring this together, that critical hub. There's a, there's a connection right now right on to San Carlos. It's not a great connection right now, maybe there's a way to expand that. We want to look into that. By Wallace Fargo, there's another connection, maybe there's a way to expand that. We want to understand what's possible there. And to commit the time to get the details right. We've put a fair amount of time into the process already, and we're honored to have the opportunity to do that. We really would love the opportunity to put a lot more time into this. So, thank you for your time, and open to questions. Oh, financial, did I forget financial? Oh, this is important. Intercorp is part of the Interwest family, we're a spin-off of Interwest. Interwest developed Squaw, Whistler, Mammoth. Interwest was sold to Fortress Private Equity two years ago by Joe Hussain, one of our principals and founder. We now have Intercorp, we have our new resort group, which is called Replay, there's Intercorp Canada, we have offices in Seattle, San Francisco, Los Angeles, and San Diego, with projects in Hawaii as well. We have equity partners, City JP Morgan Chase, Carlyle Rockwood, just to name a few. We just formed a $100 million land fund with Five Mile Capital and ING Clariant. We closed our first land acquisition on that in September of last year. Not a great time to be closing on land deals, but we have the commitment, financial commitment to be able to do that. It's a great time right now to be out working on opportunities, and our financial partners understand that. Strong lending relationships, no lawsuits, lawsuits, foreclosures, or bankruptcies. And I'd add, in addition, we are intimately involved in going after the Prop 1C funds right now and understand that process very well, the state funds for infrastructure. I think that's it. Conclusion, I would also just add again, talk to our references. That is the most important thing. I mean, I can sit here and tell you anything you want about me, but talk to the people I've worked with. I've been doing the community process, I've been doing development, talk to Chris Ruckman's references, talk to Sylvia's references. You know, we've given you a list of people. If there's other people you'd like to talk to, we're happy to have you talk to anyone we've ever worked with. So, I encourage you to do that.
Mr. Kerr, thank you very much for your presentation, all the other folks also, thank you so much. Questions from the council?
Yeah, I'm going to ask some of the same ones I asked before because I think it's only fair to, you know, give them a crack at some of them, I don't think I need to ask all, but first one is the issue again about selling to the developer the property. How do you see that?
Yeah, I actually lived in a property, The Beacon, up in San Francisco, that was originally on leased land, and when I went to buy my condo, it was extremely difficult to finance, and this was in 2005. The only way it was able to be financed is there was a buyout agreement for the leased land, which they ended up having to go activate in order to sell the condos. And so, it becomes very difficult to build, to underwrite a for-sale project on leased land, and it's been, the only place it's been done successfully is down in Palm Desert on a lot of Native American land, where it's, you know, they've pulled it off, and it's just understood that there's not really another way around it. But the, what it will do, just practically, is it'll make it a rental project, and that's just for the funding reasons.
Okay, and so, in the last time the question was asked, it seemed to get around to, through some comments of the mayor, that negotiating at least parking spaces that would still be owned by the city equal to what is owned now?
Yeah, and that's, I mean, there's, basically, the way you take out, when you build a building and it goes up or out, just right now, I mean, right now, the site is actually 12 parcels. Well, it might break into 50 parcels. You can create condominiums technically, anywhere, either up in the air or down low, underground. So, what you could do with a parking garage is, you could say, this part of a parking garage or this whole parking garage, as divided, becomes owned by the city. Now, one thing I was mentioning is, there's not, you do have to be careful with the interconnections. Mixed-use development's very complicated. When you put residential and retail on the edge of each other, you've got to be, you have to think about the venting of that hood for the retail and those things where they go. Well, the same with parking and ownership. So, once again, if you built a standalone parking garage, if you will, with retail on the ground floor, and that was in the back of a project, and you put residential in front of it, that shielded that from view, but made it easy, you had easy signage to make it accessible, the ownership of that could be anything. And that also is important for financing. A lot of it comes back to that financing question and underwriting, and, you know, just as I said, you might, people might not underwrite an owned condominium on leased land, when it's an owned parking garage underneath a building, it gets more difficult to structure that as well. So, the clearer you can make it sometimes, the better. So, it's an important consideration, you have to look at all the different parameters that come into it.
Thank you on that. I'm just going to take your word about, I asked the other firm about protecting existing businesses during construction, I noticed it was a bullet point in yours, and I'm just going to take your word on that one.
Yeah, and once again, I actually even pointed to references for that. You know, our Hayes up in San Francisco, 128-unit mixed-use project with retail on the ground floor, it's built right next to a historic building with, you know, old brick, and then the other side is a storage building, it's a zero-lot line building, meaning we're building right up their side, and we actually did go underground in that parking garage, so you're digging a big hole. We have a fantastic relationship with those owners based off the time we've had to spend working with them through the process and sitting down with them, and so, the easiest way to answer that question is call them.
The question about, again, I'm just looking for, you know, an answer in terms of experience or any knowledge you have of this, and we haven't, again, we haven't talked about it as a council, but potentially, there could be the, you know, the concept of community benefit, right? In my mind, to do this project, to, you know, have all the dust in the construction and then something there, which I'm not, you know, I'm not necessarily convinced that it's something we need to do. You said it's easy to say no, so how easy is it to say yes when you look at everything? But, that said, one of the things that could pull me along as a council member on this project is if there were community benefit. And one of the things I could see is upgrades to Laurel Street through some kind of facade upgrade program that might be interconnected financially to this project.
Yeah, and there's, you know, once again, I'll go to other projects that we've worked on. You know, the project we're doing with the Redevelopment Agency in San Jose right now has a one-acre park. You know, building that park, it's a public park, it'll be a public-owned park that we're going to build. And, you know, obviously, when you're looking at something, you're saying, what does it do for me? What is, what is the benefit? Facade improvement, sure, that could be part of it. We could come up, I could sit here and tell you all sorts of beautiful things. I could tell you, we'll do facade improvement, we'll build a plaza, and we'll build a passeo, whatever term we want to throw out there. The point is, working together on how do we fund that in a way that gets done? Now, there's a couple different sources, or three different sources for that. One is outside sources. Two is using a mix of uses, some of the uses that generate revenue to help pay for that. So, for instance, housing will generate park fees or generate school fees. Retail will generate sales tax. Creating those revenue sources and understanding those revenue sources. And, you know, the third piece of it is some sort of ongoing fee to the owners of those units. So you might have an improvement district and say, okay, we're going to put another $25 per month on an HOA fee to clean the streets. If you go to Mission Bay in San Francisco, you sort of say, why is this clean? Every night, there's a guy out there spraying. Well, it's because you pay $25 a month if you live in that area. That's all possible. Now, combining that also with the market becomes very critical and saying, oh, we don't want to push don't want to push this beyond what's possible."
Matt, that's a good segue into my next question, which is my last question. And that is, and I'm giving this, you know, I didn't give this to the other developer, I'm giving it to you because of some of the things you said during the presentation, and also some of the material that's in your booklet in terms of density. And my question is, can we, and then fill in the blank, and still have this be an economically viable project? And the blank, in the blank, would be a community benefit of a meeting place. My feeling is, again, I'm not so much in favor of this project, but if I'm going to go along with it, I want to see a community benefit. And one of those things that I see needed critically in this city is a place where we can gather, a real place where we can gather in the downtown. Because, stick with me, Mr. Mayor, I see you, for instance--
I want to make this fair.
The Chamber, you know, worked long and hard to create the marketplace that we have, the farmer's market, and we close the street. And businesses, some are for it, some are against it. I think, as a council, it'd be great to give the community the benefit of a family room, where we can do things like that and not have to close the street. At-grade parking for retail, I think you're saying yes on that. And then, something that Mr. Lewis spoke to the other developers, you know, setbacks to streets and setbacks as you go up, we're looking more and more critically at that as a city. Quite frankly, as a council member, I'm tired of seeing things like what we've got on the El Comino right now that just go straight up. And we were told on that project, "Oh yeah, we're going to have setbacks." And I see none. And I'm, as a council member, I'm not going to approve projects like that.
Yeah. I mean, to answer the question, you know, what often happens in development, and, you know, through the process, I mean, this is, as Chris says, it's a public-private partnership. This is different from another process. What often happens in development is, developer buys a piece of land and is going to spend $10 million on it, and then they have to make it work. And so, the way they try and make it work is they say, "Okay, well, let's, you know, we can't, doesn't work, huh? How can we do it? Well, if we get four more units here, now it'll work, huh? Still doesn't work. Can we get one on top of that one?" That's the process. Now, in a public-private partnership, you know, there's all sorts of things that are possible. What I would bring to the table is to lay out those economics for that partnership, to say, "Okay, this is the trade-off we're making. Yeah, we could step back, and this is what it does to the value. We can go underground with parking. This is what it does to values." And so, when I say values, that might be money that it generated which would allow a bigger plaza. So, it's not, it's a series of trade-offs that we'd have to work together on to understand. And I can say, "Hmm, yeah, more density will get us this return." That's exactly what I tried to do in that slide, is, "Yeah, more density will get you more, you know, you'll have less money per unit, which means you'll have more money for, say, a park." Which of those trade-offs is important? That's for the community and the city to help us figure out.
Yes, please.
Just very quickly, Wheel of Plaza is a substantial property, but there will be an opportunity to provide, and hopefully, more of those benefits you talked about, Matt, if other properties the city doesn't own that are adjacent can be brought in. Now, developers don't by nature have an easy time partnering, but this process, by definition, is going to be a partnering process. So, we will be open to and seek to partner with adjacent properties if we can to increase the kind of benefits you talked about.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Grocock, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Mr. Lewis?
Just on to that last question. In the proposal, you guys talked about 135 to 165 units. The other proposal's 110 to 120 units. So, even though there's trade-offs in, you know, public-private and so forth, you know, what you're putting forth in this is that roughly up to 165 units might be necessary to make it penciled. Is that part of it?
I mean, when we were originally asked, it was, is there, what's the land value? Can you create land value out of this or not? You know, if you increase the units, as I showed in that slide, you can create more residual value to be used for something else. Now, is the project still economically viable? There's a whole number of pieces that have to come together for that. The math is going to be relatively the same for any developer that you work with. It's a pretty simple business. It's revenue minus costs and profit. So, the, and I don't mean to dumb it down--
You know, I would imagine different profits are different targets for different companies. So, I'm just really trying to get to, is that, are you saying that 135 to 165 in your, in this qualifications as a conceptual number, is that the target for it? Because, I mean, for me, one of the judgment I put in this, 110 units versus 165 units is a big difference.
Look, I could put down a plan there to make you happy that says 70 units. And the reason I'm saying that is that, because maybe we end up pulling in, as we're doing in San Jose, we're going after $17 million of state money for all the infrastructure, for the parking, for the parks, to bring into the equation. That changes the equation totally. So, you know, if we bring in some state money, some federal money, could you do 50 units? Sure. Now, when we were originally looking at this, the question was, "Hey, we'd like to see land value generated out of this too." And what I want to do is be very frank and realistic upfront of, "Well, yeah, but there's a trade-off on the number of units." So, we went up and said, "Okay, 130 units if you want to start driving land value out of this." And that, that conversation gets nuanced, and people say, "Well, what do you mean, there's no value?" What we can do is sit down and look at those costs with you. We can look at those revenues with you, and we can look at that profit with you. So, you understand it and say, "This is the trade-off we're making."
Okay. And then, the other thing, and just looking at overall, the types of projects that you all have been involved in, it seems like there's a greater proportion of projects in, you know, much bigger urban environments than San Carlos in general, in your experience. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure. I mean, I think the experience is the people that you're going to work with, and that's just so critical. I've been with Intercorp for two years. And I came on to Intercorp to start our, what we call our wood frame division, which is basically anything five stories or below. My experience is in townhomes, is in single-family homes, and is in small podium projects. Intercorp, as a company, has offices in Seattle, where we've been for 20 years, San Diego for 11 years, Los Angeles for seven years, and San Francisco for three years. Now, would a lot of developers start way out in the fringe and do sprawl development and do single-family homes, because that's the easiest business, and then they come in and do infill? Intercorp's model is to go in and do the biggest, scariest projects you can imagine from a complexity standpoint, and then work out. And so, projects I have right now are in San Jose, two projects, Santana Row and in downtown San Jose with the Redevelopment Agency. In Daly City, we've got a project. I was with the Olson Company for five years. In San Mateo, we've got a project. I was with the Olson Company for five years prior to Intercorp. And at the Olson Company, projects in Hayward, San Lorenzo, Palo Alto, East Palo Alto, El Cerrito, Danville, all over the Bay Area. And so, it comes back to the people, and then also, that you're working with, and then also, the site, and doing the right project for that site. And I think the last thing I'd add is, probably the reason Chris is on the team, is that very thing of, how do we bring it together to a team that's done projects also in San Carlos?
Great. Thank you.
Can I add something real quickly? Because I thought you might ask that question, so I am prepared. We have done projects in similar communities. Emeryville, Wana Creek, Mill Peters, El Cerrito, San Bruno, and San Jose and Oakland, of course, are bigger communities, but all over the Bay Area as well.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Royce? No questions now. I do have a general question when we're finished with both of the developers, or Al, but I'll save that later.
Mr. Grocock, I don't have any. Again, you came and voiced before and asked a lot of questions, and my fellow council members have asked the question, and we look like we've, I believe, taken the five here that we need to, or we thought we would ask for. So, thank you very much for your time. We may have some questions later on. At this time, I want to ask anyone in the public if they have any comments or questions. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Okay. Well, gentlemen, we have choices here. We always have choices. We can discuss this and decide. We can discuss this and come back and decide at another meeting. We can come back at another meeting and discuss it. So, I'm looking for insight. Mr. Royce, did you have a comment?
Yeah, this would be a good time to ask Al the question. Okay. The, I think Philip mentioned references and so forth. I just want to get back to Al. If we were to make a decision tonight, are, you know, do you have enough experience and knowledge and, I want to know what kind of reference, I don't look at reference checking as a reason on how you choose, but as a checkpoint as part of the process. Are you comfortable with us proceeding with the knowledge that you have of these two fine companies?
Yes. Most recently, in the last few days, we have had an opportunity, staff has called references for both development companies, and we've got nothing but good things for both firms from the other cities and other agencies that we've talked to. So, I think it's really, you know, I would say I feel comfortable with that. Before we executed an exclusive right to negotiate, we may want to do a little more in-depth checking, but I think we have enough information for you to move forward tonight.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Grocock.
I want to segue on to Mr. Royce's question and ask staff if they, when they were, or can you tell us about when you were checking the references, any discussion about working with a situation like what we have? You can tell from the questioning that, you know, keeping our existing businesses and not harming them during the construction process is, that's a big issue. So, could you talk to us about that discussion you had with any references?
I'm actually going to ask Mark Sawicki to answer that question. I think he has more direct information about that specific issue, if he did ask that question.
I didn't ask that specific question. I asked more questions about flexibility, working with them, their ability to deliver, what their community engagement process was like. Each project in each different city had different circumstances, so it wouldn't have been easy to easily compare. But, you know, I picked, the references that I did speak to were very similar situations to San Carlos.
And I think there's a number of different possibilities that we could negotiate with any development team. There may be phasing opportunities. We would look at lay-down areas and parking areas in other parts of the town. So, I think that we would look at, with the development team, what creative solutions we can come up with in partnership with the business community as well.
My other comment would be with Councilmember Ahmad, missing whether or not we want to have this conversation with all five present, just because it's a large decision, but-- I know, that's difficult to hear that I'm, you know, I'm torn, that's why I brought up that point. I have every confidence that Mr. Ahmad will come back and look at the tape of this. I know he will, because I'm going to tell him to. But, no, because he's going, I know he would anyway. And so, that's the thing that I'm a little bit concerned with. I want to make sure that, you know, the developers have the fair, the fair choice of having all five of us do this. We can still discuss some of this tonight, or we can postpone it, and then-- I'm looking for ideas here from you folks, guys. I appreciate your comment, Mr. Royce.
I do as well, and I think waiting for Mr. Ahmad to be here and in the meantime, I think the thing I'm asking is pretty critical. And--
I'm sorry, which was that?
The question of working with a downtown environment where, you know, let's face it, everybody agrees, and we've all said, that Laurel Street's very quaint and it's vibrant. It's not a big deal to us in terms of tax revenue. We've said that too. It's about 10%. You know, so the whole thing could go away, and it'd be like the economic downturn we're all going through. So, is it really that big of a deal to City Hall? I don't mean to belittle it by any means, but we could make wrong decisions here in this building, and it's not going to hurt us. But, there are people whose livelihoods depend on opening that storefront every morning and having customers come in, and customers walk out having bought something. I don't want to harm them. That, to me, is a big issue, and I would like, in the meantime, I would like to postpone this for two weeks. And in the meantime, I'd like Mr. Sawicki or Mr. Savay to call back to some of these references and say, "Did you have, you know, we've got a vibrant downtown. We've got businesses that thrive, and we do not want to cause harm. Tell us about these two developers and how they worked in your community if you had that kind of situation." To me, that is of the utmost importance.
I agree with your question. I think it's appropriate, very much so. Having been in this business but building not, I've never built these kind of units, always built other kind. Any construction you have in the downtown area, this close, we built Civic, when they built the Civic Casa Enda, it was a little bit removed, and it was still difficult, but it was a little bit removed, but certainly impacted Walnut Street to some extent. This is going to affect the businesses around there. There's no question about it. Now, I, harm is not something we, any of us want to do, but it is going to affect it. And, you know, and sometimes in a possible substantial way, and as Savay talked about, parking and phasing and all this other stuff. And I think that's the key. We've got to make sure whichever one we take, that we, that we do this in a proper way to minimize any kind of harm that'll happen. But, there's going to be a great deal of impact for a project that's going to possibly take 18 months to two years to do. So, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. I knew you knew that. I just wanted to make sure we did that. So, I'm willing to entertain a motion to, do you need a motion to continue this, Mr. Rubens, or?
Yes, you would.
And I would like to get Mr. Ahmad involved in this, and I really believe it's important. I don't mean to postpone. You folks are having to come to another meeting, and I tend to, I want to apologize for that. But, on the other hand, this is a huge project for us, and I want to make sure all five of us get a shot at talking about all the different input that we have on this. So, any other comments?
My only other comment would be that also conspicuous lack of public input tonight. So, I just think maybe also with the opportunity for people that maybe even watch this or hear that we're entertaining, you know, a couple of different proposals, that there may be some public, the next meeting, I'd actually, you know, love to hear a little of--
And I want to make sure that staff gets Mr. Grocock's question answered as best they can. So, Mr. Sawicki or Mr. Savay will follow up on that, so we can get that input.
Very good.
So, I'd make a motion to continue this item to our next meeting, two weeks from now?
Second.
Mr. Royce, is that going to fit into our schedule?
Yes, you can give us flexibility, either two weeks or four weeks. I need to verify what we're ready to go with at the next meeting, and if you could give us that flexibility, I would appreciate it. If not, we'll make it work.
I'd demand a motion to reflect two to four weeks. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember McSecond to continue this item here to our next meeting or the meeting after that. Any more discussion on this item? Hearing none. Ms. Wallen, could you have a roll call vote, please?[1721.35]